Going to do attendance, Ms. Widener.
Dr. Campley.
Here.
Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Mr. Liggett.
Here.
Mr. McKinney.
Here.
Dr. Sadler. Mr. Saylor. Dr. Weston.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silent reflection.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank everyone. All right, so given it's the last student meeting, although I do understand, Ms. Trumpa, you will be with us next year as well, correct, as a senior? Thank you. Would you mind reading our mission statement this evening?
The mission of the Perkyomen Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all of the work that you've done on the board this year, and we look forward to working with you again next year. Okay, so with that, we are at 2.03, which is my report. Did I? Oh, I'm so sorry, I turned the page. So sorry. Okay, so we are going to work for the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? The agenda is approved as presented. We're going to move the ceremony to swear our new officers in right now. We're going to do that, and then, I don't know the judge's name, so...
Rebar.
Judge Rebar. We'll go ahead and lead that off for us. Are you gentlemen ready? Is this on? Can you hear me? All right, great. Put your left hand on the Bible if you can't reach it, just extend, and raise your right hand, and then repeat after me. After I say the word "I," you say your name, okay? "I." Do you swear?
Do swear.
That I will support...
That I will support.
Obey and defend...
Obey and defend.
The Constitution and the laws...
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the jurisdiction that I serve.
And the jurisdiction that I serve.
That I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge.
With fidelity...
With fidelity.
The duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
As a school police officer...
As a school police officer.
For Perkyomen Valley School District.
For Perkyomen Valley School District.
And that I will uphold...
That I will uphold.
Obey and enforce the law...
Obey and enforce the law.
That I will support...
That I will support.
Encourage and mentor our students...
Encourage and mentor our students.
Without consideration...
Without consideration.
To a person's race...
To a person's race.
Color...
Color.
Sex...
Sex.
Religious creed...
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation...
Sexual orientation.
Age...
Age.
National origin...
National origin.
Ancestry...
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability...
Handicap or disability.
I will obey the rules and regulations...
I will obey the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures...
Policies and procedures.
Governing employees of Perkyomen Valley High School...
Governing employees of Perkyomen Valley High School.
And the Perkyomen Valley School District.
And the Perkyomen Valley School District.
I will not knowingly accept...
I will not knowingly accept.
There we go. All right. Directly or indirectly...
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing...
Any money or valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance...
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty...
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office...
Pertaining to my office.
Other than such compensation...
Other than such compensation.
As may be allowed...
As may be allowed.
By the Board of School Directors.
By the Board of School Directors.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Rebar, for taking time out of your schedule.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you all so much. Genuinely, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So 1.07, we're going to move on to additional special recognitions. I'm pretty sure we're going to be all by ourselves by the time all of the recognitions are over for the rest of the meeting. So this evening, Dr. McKinney and Dr. Russell will go ahead and lead the charge. We are honored to recognize artwork, softball, track, and color guard this evening. So, Dr. Russell?
Thank you, Ms. White. Mr. McKinney and I are proud to recognize all of these students this evening, and again, it's always so nice to see so many students and parents, part of our public here in the meetings. Thank you for coming out tonight to celebrate your students with us. So we'll start with artwork. So as we go through the presentations and the recognitions, if the students being recognized could come up in this area to be recognized, receive a cookie and some words. We will then afterwards... Wait, we're going to switch sides. Thank you, Mr. McKinney. We will... We will then take the groups outside into the lobby where Dr. Parr will grab some pictures, and then we'd like to post those on social media. So let's start with some recognition for artwork. First up, we're pleased to recognize Jessica Yin, a first grade student at Skipback Elementary. Is Jessica here? Come on up here, Jessica, and congratulations. Her artwork was inspired by the story "Please, Mr. Panda" by Steve Anthony, and it earned first place in the GFWC State Competition for the K-2 Division. Her artwork features vibrant doughnuts printed using pool noodles and tempera paint, creating a lively background. Her creativity and attention to detail truly shined through in this imaginative and beautifully executed project. Congratulations, Jessica. Okay. I'll go out in the lobby. All right. We also have another student to recognize. We'd also like to recognize Cameron Farrell, fifth grade student at Skipback Elementary. Cameron won first place at the county level and second place at the regional level in her division, third through fifth grade. She used Prisma color pencils in creating her piece. Congratulations to these talented students and their art teacher, Mrs. Alicia Fox, who serves Skipback Elementary. Congratulations. All right, next we move on to some athletics and some wonderful accomplishments this year. We're going to start with softball. And if we could have all of our softball team members up here along with the coach, that would be great. All right. On Monday, May 13th, the Perkyomen Valley softball team defeated Upper Marion in nine innings by a score of three to one to advance to the PAC final versus Boyertown. On Thursday, May 16th, our softball team with stellar pitching from Macy Stretchay. Way to go, Macy. Great defense and a two-run homerun from Sammy Peterson. Congratulations, Sammy. And four RBI bunts to defeat Boyertown seven to one to win the PAC championship. Congratulations. Congratulations. This is our coach, Mickey Marsilio, and congratulations to you, Coach. He's going to call the names out of his players. They will be recognized with a certificate for their accomplishments. Great season, and then we'll take a picture out in the lobby. All right?
Thank you very much. Thank you for recognizing us, school board. We do appreciate it. Alphabetically, Ashley Karosi.
We'll do it out there, yes.
Aaron Karosi. CJ Chico. Adriana Corples. Gianna Corples. Mia Corples. Mae Dodson. Lily Foster. Morgan Haywood. Denise Hurd. Peyton Mears. Jaclyn Mitelli. Aubrey Morgan. Lily Potasio. Sammy Peterson. Audrey Powers. Bella Reidy. Olivia Sharkey. Olivia Smith. Macy Stretchay. Last, Ashley Yanotuano. Thank you again.
Congratulations, ladies. Way to go. Great season. Yeah, stay in the lobby. Thank you. So I'm wondering if Coach Petsko is here? Excellent. Coach Petsko, can I ask you to join me? This is Coach Joe Petsko, who led the track and field teams this spring, and we honor some outstanding achievements on the part of our track athletes. We begin with Ian Johnson. Ian is the 3200 meter and 1600 meter District One champion. Very impressive. He is the 3200 meter, the 1600 meter, and the 800 meter PAC champion. Ian had a great finish to his high school track and field career. He also earned both a fifth and sixth place finish at the PIAA State Track and Field Championship Meet, setting school records in both the 1600 meter and the 3200 meter run. And actually, when I saw Ian's time, I thought for certain he should win. The field was unbelievable this year. There was a young man who broke four minutes. Really impressive. Ian's time was very impressive. In addition, Ian Johnson, Jason Clifford, Cooper Hay, and Nate Boyer are the four-by-800 PAC champions. These four young men ran a great race at the PAC Championship Meet with all four running terrific legs. Their performance not only set a new school record, it also qualified for the District One Championship Meet where they went on to compete the following weekend. Congratulations, gentlemen. Next, we'd like to recognize Doug Ledger. Doug is the javelin PAC champion, winning the PAC meet on his first throw of the competition. He went on to medal at both the District One Championship Meet and the PIAA State Championship Meet. His throw at the state meet set a new school record for the javelin. Congratulations, Doug. Way to go. Jane Fisher is the high jump PAC champion. Jane was the only competitor in the PAC Championship Meet to clear five feet. She went on to set a personal best jump of five feet, three inches at the District One Championship Meet, earning a fourth place finish and qualifying for the PIAA State Championship Meet. Congratulations, Jane. Outstanding. Ally Matasich is the 3200 PAC championship winner. Ally won the 3200 meter by 11 seconds. She qualified for the district championship meet and again ran a great time in a very competitive field of distance runners. Congratulations, Ally, for a great season. Coach Petsko, congratulations on really a fantastic season and some remarkable times, really, yeah. So we'll ask you if you can stay for a few minutes in the lobby. We'll then take a picture of everybody. All right? Thank you. Congratulations. All right, next up, we have our color guard. So the achievements of our color guard team were very impressive this year, and last month we saw a very brief clip of one of their performances. Passion, perseverance, integrity, and drive defined this exceptional team. The level of dedication shown by students, staff, and parents was second to none and helped in building a family. Together, this team earned their positions as main, the Mid-Atlantic Indoor Network Champions, and the Tournament Indoor Association Regional Three A-Class Champions. So the TIA Atlantic Coast is an A-Class Championship Competition, and they also won that. So please join me in congratulating the following team members. Alex Atherton. Abby Bachelder. Kaylee Coyle. Taylor Dillon. Sophia Hoffman. Abby Leigle. Mariana Madrigal. Kira McCartney. Arden Rutter. Asher Singare. Caitlin Stebner. And Jessica Yin. Congratulations, color guard. Really nice work. Great season. Congratulations. We're going to ask you to wait two out in the lobby if we could, and we're going to take your picture in a few minutes, too. Thank you. Congratulations. All right, we have another group, one more group we'd like to recognize this evening, and that is Big Brothers and Sisters. Is Mrs. Kim Paulus here by any chance? Excellent. Come on up, Mrs. Paulus and Mr. Heist. So, Mrs. Paulus. Yeah. So I'll... I'd like to recognize you, and I know that... Does Mr. Heist work with you also? Mr. Rob Heist also supports Big Brothers, Big Sisters. This is now in four schools. In addition to Mrs. Paulus, thank you, Mr. Heist, Mr. Rob Heist also supports Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and these are high school students that travel to elementary schools a couple of times a year to spend time with our elementary students, and it's a wonderful relationship, nice activities that happen between our high school students and our elementary students. So our final recognition this evening is our Big Brothers, Big Sisters group, led by Mrs. Kim Paulus and Mr. Rob Heist. Our Big Brothers, Big Sisters program is a highly selective club for sophomores, juniors, and seniors who wish to give back to their community by serving as mentors to young Vikings in grades one through five. This year, we had a total of 56 "bigs," as they're called. Each month, participants engaged with their littles to provide guidance and support. The program helped participants in shaping strong friendships and fostering personal growth and community connection. We are very proud of our students who participated in this program, and I would like to extend congratulations to all of them for the time you've dedicated in this endeavor. Mrs. Paulus will read the names, and then again, we have certificates for each of you. We'd like to give you a cookie and then take a picture to recognize you. Thank you for your service to the elementary students in the school district. Sophia Allen. Dara Asherman. Ryan Asherman. Gabrielle Barrett-Garvin. Maria Benjamin. Juliana Brecht. Caroline Buckley. Reed Buxton. Johanna Corkery. Andrew Donato. Elle Dunner. Carly Elmer. Amaya Fowler. Ty Hall. Leah Hall. Madeline Halpin. Liam Hallis. Catherine Harrington. Allison Hurd. Eliana Johnson. Kaylee Jordan. Kyle Kirsey. Ava Kennedy. Mallory Klug. Brooke Krantz. Shay LaFerty. Isabel Lee. Vienna Lee. Chelsea Lingo. Justin Massey. Marissa McGinley. Bridie Missen. Riley Morgan. Madison Muns. Lauren Murphy. Lucas Nguyen. Aislinn Pepper. Georgia Rao. Sierra Rife. Ella Ryder. Alyssa Reyes. Reyes, sorry. Keegan Rifer. Emily Rifer. Derek Ruth. Amela Setchaj. Sorry if I said that wrong. Olivia Sellers. Lucas Sinkinson. Casey Citron. Tara Spahnholz. Dylan Taylor. Dylan Taylor. Grayson Tobin. Brianna Tripodi. Emily Valesky. Ryan Valesky. Hannah Boss. And Annabelle Willenbecker. Congratulations. All right, if it's okay, take a five-minute recess. Hopefully, it'll be, but we're going to try for five. Okay, very good. Head out and take a picture, but congratulations to all of you.
All right, with that, we're going to reconvene, and we are at 1:08. Comments on any topic? Anyone in the public that should care to share or impart us with a comment? They're welcome to. State your name and municipality. You have three minutes, and I ask with regards to decorum, if it would not be appropriate for a workplace or a classroom, to please refrain. And with that, I open the floor. William McGill, you are number one.
I come to you this evening to talk about class size. And I don't think I need to educate the school board on how, what the benefits are of a lower class size. And I know we have class size ranges, but I would ask that we look at those ranges and see if they are appropriate for a post-COVID student population. And the reason why I say that is because students are presenting differently than they did pre-COVID. And we're seeing more challenges in the classroom. So with that being said, I know that's too late to ask for this school year. But if you could stick to the lower end of those class ranges, it would benefit the students. And we know that you're here and I'm here to benefit the students. So that's my ask this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGill. I see Katherine and Nicole Harrington signed in to speak at the beginning of the meeting, but I don't, okay. Seeing no one else signed in, would anybody else have anything to say? All righty, seeing none, we will move on to Section 2.01, which is a special presentation. It's our annual Safe Schools Report. Captain Dean Miller will go ahead and give that report. Chief, I'm so sorry. It says mister, so I was trying to figure out the...
Thank you, Ms. White. This evening, just very briefly, I just wanted to review the safety report for the '22-'23 school year, just to summarize some of the projects and things that have been happening so that those in the community are informed about what we are doing about safety and increasing our presence when it comes to that, and some of the projects that we've undertaken. And this is a cooperative effort, not only from the unit that I supervise with safety, security, and school police, but also our operations team, our IT team. We all work cooperatively together to support what goes on in our schools every day with our teachers, and we're very happy to do that. So I thank you for the time that you've given me to go over this. Our purpose here is to be legally compliant, to give a report to the board, which I did do prior to this meeting and executive session. It is something that's not subjected to right-to-know, but we did review a number of things in detail with you, and the public needs to be aware of that and what we are doing in that regard. We reviewed current practices, things that we have learned, what we are looking to do moving forward with regards to recommendations. And then I will be submitting this report to the state by the end of this month, again, to be compliant with the legal regulations that are put before us. The purpose comes out of Act 44, which is a legislative act, came about in 2018, requiring states and, or school districts, rather, to have safety and security coordinators for each public school system. I was named to that post approximately three years ago, following in the footsteps of Mr. Weaver. And we have taken a number of initiatives in moving forward with regards to that. So I'm not going to read each bulleted point here, but you can see there is a number of objectives and topics that are responsible to be overseen in my role, as well as cooperatively, as I mentioned, with the rest of the district. So we are compliant in all of these areas. We work cooperatively with jurisdictional law enforcement agencies, fire companies, and ambulance squads that are within the district. Part of that is to engage them in a number of ways should there be an emergency on campus. We have several things planned for the upcoming school year as well. We're supported by the Montgomery County Department of Public Safety, the Pennsylvania State Police, Collegeville Police, the Lower Frederick Police, and then a number of agencies across the district. As I said, you are legally required as a district to appoint a coordinator, which you have done within my role. One of the new things this year was the mandatory Act 55 training, and that's a requirement in these subject areas that are bullet pointed here that we must have conversations about on a continuing basis. So two hours per employee per year can be spent online, and then a third hour with drills needs to be done in person. And we have done that with our entire employee base across the district, faculty, staff, and students where required. We completed our threat assessment team, and we continue to build upon that to be looking for significant indicators that would tell us that there's a problem brewing or that there's a student that might be in crisis. And we've worked very well with all of our buildings, as well as with neighboring jurisdictions, to give services to the students where necessary. And then the last thing, obviously, is the training that's required for our school security guards and our school police officers. And they, again, are compliant throughout this process this last year. They've done a very great job of being flexible to get these things done. It's been a lot of moving parts this first year, but we're very thankful that it took place. Our emergency planning focuses on the "I love you guys" protocol, which you'll see here. These posters are posted in conspicuous areas throughout the district. We practice these protocols on a regular basis. We're having drills on each one of the five steps that you see here with each building, with all the different grade levels, and we do that at the appropriate level for the students in those particular buildings. We also take special steps to address our special needs population with whatever concerns we might have with regards to their conditions when we're drilling. We're required to submit an emergency operations plan to the county, which has been done, and in this next calendar year, I hope to update the plan along with our neighbors at Methacton and Springfield and Sauter Town especially, due to our proximity to the creek and a number of the issues that that presents for us. We have a radiological emergency response plan, which is specific to the Limerick Generating Station, and we're required under federal legislation to drill one of our, each of our buildings on a rotating basis. Each year, we do three locations. It's typically district office and elementary school, and then one of the secondary schools. We work very closely with the Office of Emergency Management and as well the six municipal emergency managers in the jurisdictions that we serve. Some of the new things that were added for the last calendar year, as you're well aware, we just, again, so we're in our new school police department this evening. Again, thank you very much for that opportunity to present the entire group to the public. I certainly appreciate that. And we went through all the trainings that were required to get us to this point. We have transitioned into utilizing all the equipment that you approved for us to purchase. We have a few more things that are still coming in. We still continue to work with our vendor provider APC, who provides supplemental services for us during the day, as well as security for athletic events and evening events throughout the district. We were successful in receiving a grant, $45,000, from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, and we're using that for some hardening of our building, so the outside exposure to the public. One of the things, as an example, would be the raptor system, which we had up and fully running this year. Just some of the things we can use that for. We did interior lock RFP this year. We're in the process of transitioning through that process. There's a total grant of $315,000 between the district and the county that we're going to use along with that project. We did a great deal of work on the exterior of our building, so this part of it gets us now inside the building to continue with that safe protocols that we're looking for. We did continuous policy review and development, and it's guided by the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, or PSBA. And then just recently, this last week, we received our credentials from the state as a criminal justice agency. So we're very happy to have that. That makes us able to work with the court systems if necessary. Excuse me. Our MOUs that have been mentioned many times are our written agreements with the jurisdictions that surround us with law enforcement. And now that we have our own agency, those particular details and those MOUs will be updated in 2025 to reflect more of the role that we'll be doing, as well as what they can do to support us. Here are some of the policies that PSBA has brought to our attention for the NUC next cycle, so the next 12 months. You'll notice a number of these are familiar to you. We've already done a lot of work with these, but the ones that are highlighted specifically are the policies that will be revised and reissued. Excuse me. And that's a quick summary of what we did in our executive session, so I don't know if anyone from the board has any questions to follow up what we discussed earlier.
Dr. Cambley?
I thought of two. One, I'm just kind of still curious on the vestibule here at the high school. I know with us moving operations and... I know with us moving operations and to the other committee, I'm assuming it's been discussed more there, and I'm probably just missing pieces. I'm looking to you, Barb, just...
Yeah, I'm sorry, you say that again?
The vestibule here in the high school.
Yes, we have, we have continued some conversations around that with Mr. Weaver, Mr. Fabrizio, and have considered some of the renderings that were presented to us by architects, and are really looking at the purpose for any changes and what they would bring in terms of enhancements to safety. So we've had some conversations. We thought it might be helpful to have the lead principal weigh in as well. But, but those conversations are ongoing. And the focus, the priority in terms of the vestibule is here at the high school.
No, that makes sense, thank you. And then the other thing, and I was just looking because I wasn't sure what the name was, has there been any discussion as far as safety working with CHOP for their HeartSafe Schools program in conjunction with Project Adam?
I have not at this yet, at this point, yet. I mean, I'm happy to do that. I'm not that familiar with it.
They work with schools to help you become heart safe as far as like having an emergency care team on each building. How, they call it a MERT, Medical Emergency Response Team.
Yeah.
To make sure that everybody's trained and has their jobs. And then they actually come out and they do like a, it's similar to like a lockdown to make sure that you are responding within your eight-minute timeframe.
Right.
And then CHOP will deem your school heart safe, like they'll come out and do, they'll work with you to make sure that the, the school, it's just, there's a whole thing on it online that you can look, it's called implementing a heart safe school program.
Okay, and now that you do mention that...
Just to kind of look, look at.
Right, now that you do mention that, Mrs. Cavini, the nurse at South, has made a contact with that, and she and I actually have a date on the calendar to meet to discuss that. I didn't realize it was tied to CHOP.
Yes.
But as soon as you mentioned MERT and a few of the other things you said there, I realized, hey, this is the same program.
Okay.
So she hasn't even rolled it out to me yet, but I am familiar with it.
Dr. Boyd, do you have something to add?
Oh, sorry.
If I could just for a minute, we've been talking a little bit about this through the Wellness Committee, and what we did last summer is we opened up first aid CPR AED training to participants across the district, not just, for example, our paraprofessionals that support special education students that require that training, but we did open it up. And again, this summer, we will have four sessions of CPR first aid AED training opened up to staff members. I think we can take 10 participants each time. So again, that idea is to build safety response teams within the buildings. And then we were starting to look at those protocols. We haven't gotten far enough, but Project Adam was the primary one that we were looking at. So that will continue next year with Chief Miller and Wellness Committee.
Thank you. I do remember us talking about Wellness, about the AEDs and getting certified and stuff, but I don't know why I wasn't connecting to Project Adam, and we just, we're on that, we were doing Project Adam, and it made me think, when you brought up all the safety and security, I was like, oh, I wonder, so, thank you.
Is there any other comments, questions? Chief Miller, on behalf of the school board, I want to thank you for the diligence and the undertaking. You'd really, you conquered, conquered a beast with getting everybody on board, up to speed, and all trained. So sincerely thank you, and thank you for all of the work that your team has put in to, you know, being so invested in the school district.
You're very welcome, and thanks to all of you for, for supporting this initiative. It's been quite a project, but we're very happy with where we're at.
Very good, thank you. So with that, we're at 2.02, our last student liaison report. Ms. Tremba?
Thank you. Good evening and happy June. Despite summer's fast approach, man, our students are achieving lots of new, exciting things that I'd like to quickly highlight, most of which will probably sound a bit repetitive now. But first, I'd like to extend a belated congratulations to the indoor color guard. They're 2024 Scholastic A Champions, and they had a breakout season, winning two regional competitions and many others. Also, in the music category, we'd like to congratulate Grace Marin, Victoria Hall, and the entire cast of The Prom for their nominations in the Independence Awards. The Independence Awards recognize musicals in the Philadelphia area, and they were nominated for Best Actress, Best Female Vocalist, and Best Song, respectively. Our athletics have also had great success recently, with a few highlights being the softball team's Pac Championship, and track athletes Ian Johnson, Cole Uger, Doug Ledger, Eddie Smith, Sienna Miller, and Jane Fisher, all earning medals at the district competition. These athletes continued their seasons at state championships in Shippensburg, where Ian Johnson and Doug Ledger both earned medals and school records. Finally, I'd like to congratulate the PV class of 2024, who will be graduating this Friday. They've made their time at PV very memorable, and I'm sure many of us are looking forward to seeing their future successes. Thank you.
Ms. Tremba, thank you. And your counterpart, Mr. Drew Kenworthy, I believe that he's at a football event this evening, so unfortunately, he missed his last meeting, but we very much appreciate both of you sitting as student representatives for the school board, and again, we'll see you next year. Okay, so moving on to 2.03, it's the president's report. I have nothing. Dr. Russell is 2.04, superintendent's report. 2.0...
Yes.
2.04 is Dr. Russell's report. Oh, are my numbers off, because I'm reading off of the draft? I'm so sorry. Okay, but we're on the same page. 2.05, Dr. Russell.
And thank you, Ms. White. So I have a couple of different topics I'd like to share with the board this evening, and you can see them here on our table of contents. I'll take us back to our shared beliefs and our goals, or our focus areas that are, they continue to be in place until we update our comprehensive plan through a process next year. So let's congratulate some of the individuals who have been serving the district. They are opting to retire. And on our list, you see a list of some of the teachers that we know as of today. Sometimes that, that list increases between now and the start of the school year. But for now, I'd like to personally recognize Mrs. Cherie Custer, Mrs. Dawn Crone, Mrs. Lisa Lane, Mrs. Diane Melville, Mrs. Donna Muscatello, Mrs. Dawn Nelson, Mrs. Karen Schweyer, Mr. Barry Spencer, Mrs. Janice Wagman, Mr. Tim Walsh, Mrs. Beth Yaksic, and Ms. Diane Yanez for their service to the school district in a variety of roles that have all improved the experiences and made the experiences of our students the ones that they, very positive. So thank you for your service to the school district. Wishing you the best in this next phase of life. We have two graduation ceremonies. So Ms. Tremba mentioned our high school graduation ceremony this Friday. We have the North Montco. They call it a senior recognition night, so some of our students who are graduating, if you will, from their technical career experience at North Montco will be celebrated tomorrow night. So I'll be attending that ceremony. It's open to the public. It is held in the auditorium at the North Penn High School, beginning at 6:00. So congratulations to our seniors who are also being recognized tomorrow evening as tech school students. So this is our 55th commencement this Friday. It will be livestreamed. We're hoping for nice weather. I think Dr. Moss is just a tiny bit nervous at this point. Hoping to be able to have the ceremony outside seems to be the preference on the part of most. But congratulations, as Ms. Tremba mentioned, to all of our graduates. We'll see many of them there. Many of us here around the table will be attending. It's a very exciting night and a special one for our seniors. So I wanted to correct some discipline data that was actually shared in public about our school district. There was an article run in The Patch that ranked local school districts based upon discipline data. And this isn't a nice ranking. This isn't a proud ranking. This is actually one that raised some questions and concerns for administration. And we were ranked, I think, in the top 10 because, according to what was reported, we had 2,000 incidents. And I wanted to clarify for the board and for the public that the data were presented in error, and this is an error in our student information system, which is new to the district. And an update is being performed before the next report is due, which is July 30. So instead of 2,004 infractions, our system scooped up everything beyond what's expected to be reported. If it had done what it was supposed to do, only 190 of those infractions would have been reported, which is the case for, for school districts around us as well. There are very specific infractions that the state requires schools to report as part of that Safe Schools Report that you see online, or you can access if you choose to. So there has been an error now for two years, and this year it is expected to be corrected before the 23-24 report will be submitted. An update on our Southeast Youth Development Center, so this is the Development Center for Incarcerated Young Men, set to open July 15 or so, and host four to six students. They're describing that as a soft start. The school year begins on August 1st, and there are some, there are some expansions and construction projects within the facility. And again, they're, they're using the women's facility that was originally constructed to host about 200 women, but never really did that. This is now going to become the school or the youth development center for these young men. They're expanding some of the learning space inside. So as they do that, they'll be able to accommodate more students and slowly increase up to that 48 maximum they anticipate by the end of the calendar year is their target date. All costs are covered by the state for this project. And we, there is an agenda item on the agenda this evening that requests action on the part of the board this month to approve a final agreement, as presented, to partner with MCIU to provide the educational programming to these students. So some community partnerships, I just want to conduct a few shout-outs real quick. We had the Art and Food Truck Festival, and if you had a chance to stop by, it really is a wonderful community event. It was a beautiful day, and the art department does a really nice job. It's, it, it has become something that I think a lot of us look forward to. It's unique, and yet, no one is tired of it yet. They appreciate the food trucks, they appreciate the live music, they appreciate the vendors that are present, and some of the other activities that are geared towards students. They love to see their administrators in the dunk tank, too. So it, it really was a beautiful day, and I just want to give a shout-out to each of our art teachers for their contributions to this day. It's a lot of work, but a wonderful community event.
Great turnout.
And a great turnout. There was a wonderful turnout. And then we had a moon tree landing, and I, I shared that with the board. But under Dr. Kloon's leadership, PV Woods was actually awarded a Artemis Moon Tree, and it's a sweet gum, I believe. And it was selected, the, the group was selected by NASA and the U.S. Forest Service to actually receive this tree and include it in the arboretum. And so this was a really special event for Dr. Kloon and some of the other individuals that attended. So there you see Dr. Kloon, some students that were there next to the tree as it's being planted, and the solar system depicted behind it. Apparently, this tree spent some time as a seedling in space, and because of that, very special. So we're very proud and appreciative that we have been presented this tree. And there are some additional pictures. We had some wonderful guests here Saturday. As part of this ceremony, we had Representative Joe Webster, Representative Donna Shuren. We had our PV Foundation, a shout-out to our foundation, for another $7,000-plus donation to the arboretum and some of the work there. We had representatives from Ursinus, as well as the Delaware Tribe of Indians. And then we had the Pratt Institute, also present. The Pratt Institute brought with it an experimental seaweed item, if you will, that is intended to be placed in the ground under where the tree is planted to help hold water in place and support the tree as it's beginning to take root. So it's, it's something that they shared with Dr. Kloon and actually placed in the holes where we planted a couple of these different trees in the hopes that it will really support their, their development right out of the gate. Photos courtesy of Mr. Liggett. Mr. Liggett was also there for the ceremony, and Mrs. Judy Lofton. So I very much appreciate some of the photos there. And it, it was a very nice event, really, very nice. And then some really good news, Middle School West welcomes Ken. And Ken is their new facility dog, and they are very excited about Ken. So I just want to send a shout-out to Ava Bellino. She's pictured in, in this photo with the team from West, along with Mrs. Carla Zalinski, who is a counselor. Both of them worked tirelessly to really get to this point, and the West team is just thrilled. Jen Moylan is going to be the caretaker for Ken, so the Jen and Ken team is something that people are, you know, they're making, they're having some little fun, they're having some fun with that. But really, Ken is a, is a nice dog, and when you look at him, he seems as if he's smiling at you. I also want to give another shout-out to the Education Foundation. Again, they supported this facility dog, and you'll see them represented on the agenda later tonight as the board is asked to approve the purchase of an anatomage table that they are contributing a significant amount of money toward. So I thank the Education Foundation for their contributions to both the arboretum, to Ken, and to this anatomage table, presuming our board agrees and approves it. And thank you to you as board members for supporting this somewhat unorthodox approach to supporting our students. We're really looking forward to some positive outcomes as a result. So, thank you. And with that, that ends my report.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Russell. Okay, so, moving along, we are at the Solicitor's Report.
Our report.
Okay, 2.06, 2.07, Board and District Committee Reports. Does anyone have anything to add from any committee? Okay, I know that there were some operations updates, Mr. Weaver, as part of your presentation, we'll discuss those.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. So moving on to Section 3, Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to, go ahead? Oh, we're just, we're going to build the consent agenda out for next week. Section 4 is Education. Ms. Widener, if you could make note that Dr. Campley is going to lead that section.
4.01, Education Committee of the Whole. Dr. Dietrich, would you like to take over?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Campley. This evening, we have some presentations. The first presentation is from Dr. Champagne Lee regarding our educational equity, providing an update. Josh, Dr. Champagne Lee, it's all yours.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief update regarding educational equity, which is Policy 832, and more specifically, the Equity Action Plan. As many of you may know, I began this role in late November, right before Thanksgiving. At that time, I was given a priority list, which I quickly reviewed and started to work through. Looking at our Equity Action Plan, there are eight distinct focus areas, so I'm providing you tonight with a snapshot of some of the progress and updates in each of those focus areas. It's certainly not all-encompassing, but hopefully, it gives you an idea of some of the ways in which we have upheld equity within the district this year. Looking at Focus Area 1 on the Equity Action Plan, it focuses on policies and procedures. So I want to call out a couple of specific actions that have happened in this regard. First and foremost, the Equity Audit is something that was recommended when the Equity Action Plan was created. An Equity Audit really just gives us an opportunity as an organization to take a comprehensive look at our policies, at our procedures, at our systems, our practices, and that allows us to identify things that we're doing well, as well as things that we may need to think about and continue to improve upon. We have selected the MAEC Audit Tool. It is a well-known tool. As an administrative team, we started to complete the, the tool in small groups earlier in the winter. That is a process that is still ongoing. We have plans with our upcoming administrative retreat to finish the tool. Once we have that data, we'll take a look at it and start prioritizing areas of focus. I've worked collaboratively throughout the second half of the school year with our five ESL specialists on the development of what's called a Language Language Instruction Educational Program, which is also abbreviated as LIEP. This is a foundational resource that really documents our plan of studies, our plan of programming for our English learners. It is linked to the presentation tonight for your approval. So we have been working on this for the last couple of months, looking at different LIEPs across the state, comparing them, and then making our own LIEP, so it is linked for your review. And that's in accordance with our Board Policy 138. Focusing, continuing to focus on policy and procedures. I've also been working particularly very closely at the middle school level, but also all throughout the district, on looking at preventative ways to make sure that our school environments are looking at preventative ways to make sure that our school environments are safe, supported, that students feel included. As it relates to Policy 249, which is bullying, cyberbullying, we know and research supports, preventative measures are the best way to ensure that bullying and cyberbullying is not happening within our school communities. So there have been a variety of actions that have occurred this year as it relates to this specific area. In middle of the year, about December, January, there was a need identified at the middle level based on their data, that we really needed to target some specific teaching efforts regarding bullying and anti-bullying. So in partnership with the administrators at the middle level, as well as some of the school counselors and social workers and psychologists, a lesson was developed. We took a considerable amount of time to gather teacher feedback to support teachers' professional learning, and we were able to collaboratively, in January or February, I believe it was February, deliver a common lesson to all sixth, seventh, and eighth graders at our middle school, and the focus really was on bully prevention, teaching students what bullying is, what it looks like, what it sounds like, how to report bullying. And our goal was really just to increase their awareness and understanding. We also know that data from the Climate Survey indicated that bullying perceptions were high across stakeholder groups, so we wanted to make sure that we were acting on that by providing an educational opportunity. And lastly, as we think about the work of the Climate Task Force, which was recently formed, we've identified equitable school discipline, which really encompasses restorative practices, positive behavior supports, social-emotional learning, logical consequences. All of those things fall under the umbrella of anti-bullying measures, and we will be working to develop some specific goals in that regard. In addition, as the middle school staff prepares for a new character education program, some of the other actions that have occurred in regard to training, our middle school staff received two facilitated trainings by Devro on social-emotional learning. There's going to be additional training as they prepare for the implementation of Character Strong in the fall, as well as the summer. Select middle school staff also participated in a restorative practice training, and they have plans to turnkey that information so that we can look at expanding our restorative practices across, across classrooms. And we've recently acquired some grant funding that we're going to use to target mental health support for students in need. So again, all of these actions are in support of our efforts to create schools that are positive, safe, and inclusive, and obviously focusing on the, the bullying and cyberbullying. Focus Area 2 is regarding curriculum and instruction. There is a big, robust goal that's written in the Equity Action Plan. I highlighted for visual reference some of the key components of that goal. When you think about our curriculum and our instructional practices, multiple pathways to success, equitable access, differentiating financial allocations, removing barriers, and improving outcomes for all students. So one of the things that I've been involved in as it relates to this specific goal, we have a Black History course, which was developed several years ago now, and there are three sections of that course that ran this year. I was able to engage with each of those sections earlier in the year, speak with those students. I was able to gather some anecdotal feedback regarding their experiences. And one of the things that I gathered through my conversations with students is that a lot of students have an interest in taking the course, but were reluctant to do so because it doesn't have the Honors or AP designation. So I do believe, based on my understanding of the course, that it does have the potential for the Honors designation as a minimum, and I'll be working with the high school social studies department to take a look at how we can rewrite that curriculum so that we can have that Honors designation at some point down the road, not for next year, but it is something that we are hoping to be able to accomplish in the years to come. As it relates to curriculum and instruction, I've also been very much involved in all of our efforts to get our full-day kindergarten program up and running. We've been talking a lot about that, so I, I will leave it at that, but it is definitely an area that I have been involved in and very excited to see the full-day program officially launched when school resumes in August. Focus Area 3 is regarding workforce diversity. This year, we were fortunate to add two additional ESL specialists to the team. Both of those specialists are bilingual. Our ESL specialists, we now have five across our district to support the seven schools. I've been working very closely with that team in a variety of capacities, and I also have taken on the role of their immediate supervisor, so it's been great getting to know them, but also great that we now have some bilingual specialists as part of the team, especially considering many of our Ls do speak Spanish as their first language. As it relates to workforce diversity, we are also taking a closer look through the Climate Task Force at staff morale and workplace culture. That was a specific goal that was written into the Equity Action Plan, and the Task Force has identified that as an area that we should prioritize. So as we think about our upcoming meetings with the Task Force, we'll be looking more closely at what our data says regarding staff morale and workplace culture and developing a specific goal. PV continues to participate in the MCIU Job Fair as another way of looking at diverse recruitment. Focus Area 4 is community partnerships. So one of the more recent ones is, again, the Climate Task Force. We have an active 30 members in the Climate Task Force, and that involves school board members, as well as parents, administrators, teachers, counselors, and we've recently recruited a couple of students to join the Climate Task Force. We'll be meeting again on the 17th of June, and then we have another meeting scheduled for the end of September. We've recently renewed our membership, or will be renewing our membership, with the Delaware Valley Consortium for Equity and Excellence. It's a group that I've had very rich experiences with over the past decade. They support the district in a variety of ways with our efforts to support equity and inclusion. The Safe Collective Student Group is in Year 2 at the high school. I was also able to talk with them and speak about some of the work that they are doing and that have completed this year. And then our lift remediation and enrichment opportunities will be continuing this summer throughout the district. Focus Area Number 5, Welcoming an Inclusive Environment. So there's three things that I want to call out here. Our World Language Mentoring Program. This is Year 2 of the program. That program is run by Mrs. Charlotte Holman, who's one of our ESL specialists. We have, I believe, about 15 mentors this year. I could be wrong on that number. I'll be meeting with them later this week to give them certificates of, of recognition for their service this year. One of the mentors sent me a wonderful video just highlighting how positive the experience has been for him personally, but essentially, we have high school students that have been assigned to the elementary level, and they are supporting students, our ESL students in particular. So that program is continuing to go well, and we will be looking at moving it into Year 3 next year. ESL Family Night is something that was held in the fall of this year. There were 40 families who attended, and we are already in the planning stages for the upcoming Family Night in October of this year. And more recently, there was a listening campaign that was conducted, that was facilitated by myself, where I met with a variety of students in small groups in grades 3 through 12, and asked them specific questions regarding their experiences that they're having here at school. I've recently started a second listening campaign that's a little bit more targeted in working with our school counselors and identifying students who would benefit from having some conversation. So that listening campaign has completed, and we are moving into a next, next round of listening sessions. Focus Area Number 6 is regarding data analysis. So about a year ago in the spring, the MCIU conducted an Equity Audit, and they gave us some specific recommendations, not an Equity Audit, it was an ELD Program Review, rather. And based on that Program Review, they gave us some very specific recommendations, and some of the action steps that we took as a result of their recommendation was the addition of two ESL specialists this year, the development of the LIEP, and we are now engaged in curriculum writing, and specifically focusing on developing a ELD curriculum with a focus on support for our newcomer students. Focus Area Number 7 is Professional Development. So we are in Year 3 of our Roadmap to Equity. Over the past couple of years, our teachers and staff have been exploring different topics: inclusive practices, culturally responsive pedagogy, and high-impact teaching strategies. As we move into next year, we will be going deeper in those areas. Our induction plan for new staff members will now include a focus on Pennsylvania's culturally relevant and sustaining educator competencies. I'll be working collaboratively with the Curriculum and Instruction Team to develop those professional learning experiences, and also be working, I've worked with them to look at our survey that was given out in the spring, our Professional Learning Survey, where we gathered staff feedback regarding areas of professional growth. And we're incorporating those things in our upcoming professional learning plans. And still in Focus Area Number 7, Professional Learning, there was voluntary professional learning sessions that were offered for staff in January and February. 123 staff members participated in a session called "The Evolution of Diverse Language." One of the things that's important when we think about the diversity within our schools and within our community is that we have a common language from which we are all speaking from. So I offered that session across all seven buildings in January, February. There was a second session that was offered in March, April. We had 80 staff participate in that, and that was exploring and unpacking bias, and that's based on the culturally relevant sustaining educator competencies. That first competency is really about self-awareness. So self-awareness, we have to understand what our own biases are, and how do we go about overcoming them. So in addition to the 80 staff who participated voluntarily, there is an additional 75 staff members, since we had some additional in-service time, who participated in the implicit bias session during our April In-Service Day. And the final focus area is regarding financial resources. And again, we are making sure that we are spending money in a way that is equitable and fair and just for all of our students. And again, some of the things to highlight here is, again, the addition of our two ESL specialists. We've had special education staff increases in response to needs. Our Title 1 gives us, our Title 9, rather, gives us very specific formulas in terms of how we are spending money. And then we also have our PVAET, so the PerHuman Valley Athletic Equity Team. That is a group that meets, tries to meet about once a month. I've been part of that since coming onboard in November, and really just making sure that we are upholding and sustaining equitable practices within our athletics. That was a quick snapshot of the eight focus areas, but I wanted to just highlight here a couple of the positive things. The recent increase in ESL staffing has allowed us to better align the frequency and intensity of our ELD instruction, and additionally, it's been able to, it's allowed us to increase that collaboration time between ESL specialists and general education teachers. Following the release of the Climate Survey data, we quickly formed a task force. There's been two meetings that have already occurred, with an additional two on the books, to solidify our SMART goals. And then the Listening Campaign proved to be a wonderful opportunity to better understand the perspective of a sample of our students. And some of the next steps are continued professional learning to staff to ensure that they're well-equipped to meet the diverse needs of all of our students. The creation of an updated Equity Action Plan will occur during the 2425 school year. I'm investigating a new universal screener for gifted identification to better ensure equitable outcomes across schools. There's ELD curriculum writing that is occurring, K to 12. We started at the elementary level, and we're making good progress, and our focus is really on making sure that we've, we're supporting our newcomers, our students who are new to the country, and giving them the more intensive support that they need early on. And then continuing with the Listening Campaign to ensure that the lived experiences of our students is recognized, understood, and acted upon. So, in about eight minutes, that was it. Are there any questions regarding educational equity and any of the eight focus areas?
Does anyone have any questions?
I do have one question.
Yes.
Do you have targeted subjects for the professional development? That you, do you have some in mind? You know, not to hold you to any of them, but just wondering, what would be the next steps from these two?
So, looking at Pennsylvania's culturally relevant and sustaining educator competencies, really looking at each competency in order, and then based on that, determining what are the relevant activities directly aligned to that competency. So competency 1 is really about recognizing our own self and recognizing our own bias. And then before that, the precursor was, well, we need to have a common vocabulary. So it's really looking very closely at each competency, and then designing activities surrounding that. So my goal for August, September, is really still focusing on competency 1, moving into competency 2, and increasing staff members' awareness of what each of those competencies are, what they mean in practice, and then kind of working my way down the competencies.
So is there, obviously, that's the foundational piece of it.
Yes.
I know I passed on a resource a little bit earlier today with regards to student-facing resources for staff and teachers. So I didn't know if that was also going to be part of your plan to take some of the professional development and parlay it into actually matriculating it down?
Mm-hmm. It, it absolutely could. It absolutely could. And I'm excited for the summer months to give me an opportunity to really look at everything that has happened this year, and to start planning out next year. But obviously, the student experience, you know, drives everything that we do, so I'll be taking a look at, at all areas.
Awesome. Yeah, I, I feel like since November, you've done about two years' worth of a lift here, so I appreciate, this was very comprehensive, very detail-oriented, and really very, very clear presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, then, we'll move to the second and the third item, the Curriculum Guides and the Curriculum Resources. The presenters in those two areas would be Mrs. O'Sullivan, Mrs. Ranko, and Ms. Dreisbach.
Good evening. So before us, we have the request to approve the following Curriculum Guides that we presented at last month's Board Agenda. So those will be up for approval for this month, as well as we are presenting three new Curriculum Guides this month for approval in August. So the, these are three different high school courses in three different areas. So our first is a business course called Business Applications. And within this course, students really focus on three different Microsoft applications: Microsoft Word, Microsoft Excel, and Microsoft PowerPoint, using it in both, you know, educational settings as well as professional settings. There are certification exams offered at the end of each one of the different application areas, and these, this gives them a globally recognized certification as a student. It also provides evidence towards a graduation pathway. So students are able to get three different pieces of evidence for their graduation pathway by passing the certification. In addition, we have our Intro to Engineering course, which is part of our Tech Education Department. This course is aligned to our STEEL standards, so our STEEL standards, again, involves technology and engineering. And so we are excited to have this revised Project Lead the Way course. We've really focused on the engineering design process and get students creating and thinking using hands-on projects. The requested materials are basically equipment to ensure that the course is properly implemented. And lastly, we have a high school math course, Statistics, which we are excited to have revised this past year. Students focus in this course on collecting, analyzing, interpreting, and presenting data, which really leads to a lot of statistical reasoning, right? Statistics continues to be an area of focus that is highly sought after, both at the high school level and in post-secondary. The resource recommendation that we are trying to move forward is Stats Medic, which is an open education resource, meaning it is available and free online, and there's a small fee for teachers to access the assessment platform through that, which would be an annual subscription. So we are pleased to be presenting that.
With the new middle school schedule, there are two resources that have been piloted this year. One was Second Step, and one was Character Strong. So through this pilot, we have had a rubric, we've had community feedback, I'm sorry, committee feedback, student survey, and Character Strong did come up as the best curriculum to move forward. With this middle school schedule, Character Strong lessons would be provided twice a cycle. It is a curricular need, which definitely aligns with the Pennsylvania Department of Education's PA Career and Readiness Skills. These lessons, along with other, other initiatives, form a foundation for creating a positive school community and culture, and it also enhances bullying prevention within its curriculum. Blended instructional approach, it's hands-on, teacher-led, technology-facilitated, and this program also teaches life skills that all individuals can utilize to be successful in school, work, and life. These lessons are also, they have a family engagement component to it, and we would be requesting a three-year subscription.
Good evening. With the new middle school schedule, we now have an intervention period, and so we are seeking approval to purchase- seeking approval to purchase a reading intervention resource for the middle schools. This resource, SIPS, Systematic Instruction in Phonological Awareness, Phonics, and Sightwords, is specifically written and geared toward secondary students who have a need in instruction in foundational reading skills such as phonics and phonemic awareness. This is a one-time purchase, and it includes professional learning throughout the course of the whole year of first implementation so that teachers can best serve our students. The professional development includes onsite professional development as well as on-demand virtual professional learning, where there's going to be some coaches that are available to answer questions for the teachers and staff that are implementing the intervention, as well as onsite coaching for the teachers as they implement the new resource.
I have a question about this resource.
Yes.
Do you want me to wait?
No.
Okay. I'm curious as to the percentage of students that actually, that this applies to.
So, I don't have an exact number.
No, I don't mean to put you on the spot with that. I just, this seems like a very foundational sort of intervention, so I'm just curious as to how many students that would really touch.
It is a small population of students. We are also purchasing a reading intervention that addresses like comprehension and fluency needs, but I'm using the Structured Literacy Grant to purchase that. So with the addition of this resource, it covers the gamut of literacy structured, literacy skills that come from, you know, phonemic awareness to comprehension. So with the addition of both resources, we can meet the needs of any student that enters middle school. The profile is changing, you know, every year, and right now, you know, there is an increased need for instruction and foundational reading skills in middle school.
Absolutely. So with those two paired, and understanding that this would be a supplement to the one that you have the grant money for, that I understand.
Yeah.
What will be done for enrichment for the students that fall outside of the need of an intervention? And that can be rhetorical right now, but I think in terms of when the intervention period for the new middle school schedule cycles through, if that's what they're going to be working on on this particular day, if they'll have the STEEL standards on, you know, the, you know, those, I'm assuming that those things will cycle through the different letter days. I'm just curious as to, in terms of, you know, the highest learners that are, you know, advanced and, you know?
Yes, we're, we're working with teachers, the English teachers, to develop some lessons and resources that they can use that, using the already-existing core curriculum to extend what the students are learning in English class during that intervention time.
Okay. I guess that's my, my biggest takeaway of an intervention period is that it's great for intervention, but then there's a segment of the population that really need enrichment above and beyond, and sometimes the interventions become a painful redundancy.
Oh, yeah. The students who need enrichment would not be receiving this intervention.
But I, what will they be doing instead? I guess that's my, that's really what I'm getting at.
So they'll do extension activities from the already-existing core curriculum that will, you know, enrich and extend the learning that they're doing in English class.
I appreciate, just, I just wanted to make it very clear when we're presenting intervention resources for the public that
Gotcha.
There's, both things are being looked at.
Yes, absolutely.
Dr. Campley?
I don't mean to be the negative Nancy in the group, but I will say that I am a little concerned about foundational literacy skills as an intervention at the middle school level. Typically, your kiddos who really need phonemic awareness and phonological awareness are picked up as special education needs by middle school. And this wouldn't be an intervention for your general education population. Your intervention typically, in the middle school population for reading, is the comprehension and the fluency, and if it's really still on phonological awareness, phonics, and sight words, those are your kiddos who child find why should have already been identified as needing special education services. So I am a little concerned, I mean, if we need the intervention, we need the intervention. I want to make sure we're helping and supporting all students, but by sixth grade, if they don't have phonological awareness, they should have been picked up for spec ed.
I think that's why I was asking about the percentage of students this would need to touch, and I don't have an issue supporting a resource that we've identified that, that we need. I just, to me, this seems like a significant intervention about a population of students that I don't know that I had necessarily any recognition about.
So it's, it's a very small percentage of students, and I, you know, I can get the number that we'll use this intervention for. What we're learning from Science of Reading and the research of best practice in structured literacy is that reading interven, or reading should be taught in a very systematic and explicit way, where students need to have an understanding of phonemic awareness before they can move on to phonics, before they can move on to fluency, before they can move on to comprehension. And a lot of what we've done, not Perk Valley specifically, but we as a collective group of educators in the United States, is we've passed students along, even though they didn't have a solid foundation in some of these foundational skills. And we've just focused on fluency and comprehension, but a student is not able to fully comprehend a text until they can decode the words, understand the vocabulary, and then they can start to comprehend the text. A lot of times in the past, we've kind of skipped over those skills once a student got to a certain grade and just focused on comprehension and trying to teach comprehension without going back to those foundational skills, but they do need to be taught so that the student can decode the text.
And I'm not disagreeing with you, I just don't know whether that's a general education intervention, or whether now we're talking about explicit skills that should be done through direct instruction, and are we talking special education? So that's, that's just me on my soapbox as a school psychologist, like, are we starting to cross the line into, are these kiddos who, maybe if it's such a small percentage, are we starting to talk about the, the group that maybe they should be getting explicit instruction via special ed? I just want to make, I don't want any child find issues where we're trying to do these, some things that maybe they should be goal-specific through IEPs.
And to that point, I guess, if this is a middle school resource, and they're pulled for intervention in reading in the elementary school level, is this, would this transfer down to like fourth and fifth grade, for example, this particular resource?
Not this particular resource. SIPS does make, well, the company that makes SIPS, there is a version that is for elementary students.
But we use an intervention program on, right, at the elementary level to begin with?
Right, we don't need one in elementary.
Right, okay. And so this would be, that didn't work for this group of students, now they're in middle school, and this resource is for them, correct? Okay.
And Dr. Campley, your points are well-taken, and we'll get some more detail to the board regarding what number or percent of our students would fall into this category. But your points are well-taken about child find and, you know, any kind of concerns we would have for students that would still need this sort of intervention, you know, at this stage of their educational career. So we'll, we'll get you more information on that.
And would you be able to also tie in maybe the test, test results of like PSSA data that maybe would have indicated that there was an issue in these areas? Would that be indicated in that data?
You know, the PSSA wouldn't, you know, show what standards a student, or specific skills or standards
Below average.
Yeah, but it wouldn't really diagnose that they need phonemic awareness or phonics.
But to your point, those are the foundational skills they need in order for comprehension, et cetera. So I appreciate that point of it. So to me, if they're below average and they're not performing and, you know, maybe this is what they're missing, this is the piece.
Yes.
And I understand that piece of it. So I do, that's wondering about the numbers of, of how that hashes out.
Understood, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and we have two pilots that are being recommended, as well as two resource extensions in conjunction with the pilots. So the first resource pilot that we would like to conduct is for K-5 Math, and that would be a long-term pilot next year. It would run through two trimesters, and we would be piloting iReady. Now, we already have iReady at the middle level, so that is our core resource for grades six, seven, and eight. This would be a pilot conducted at the K-5 level. We do have close to forty teachers who are interested in participating in the pilot, and so they're very excited. This is really to build a foundation and groundwork for full implementation for the next year, should iReady be the successful resource at the conclusion of the pilot. So the total cost for the pilot would be eighty-eight hundred dollars. They provide all the resources, materials, and digital access included in the pilot. What we would pay for is the professional development out of Title II funds. In addition, we also would have a middle school science pilot. We are conducting our curriculum review at this time with our middle school science team, and the resource that they have selected that they would like to move forward with, with a pilot, is TWIG Science Next Generation. This is an, an opportunity for us to evaluate whether we would want to move towards an integrated science program. So currently, we are domain-specific, meaning sixth grade is Earth and Space, seventh grade is Life Science, and eighth grade is Physical Science. Integration is really what is supported with best practice, so this would provide us an opportunity to make that shift with this resource. And this resource was created as a result of the NGSS standards, which our STEEL standards are based upon, so it wasn't modified after the fact, it was truly created with phenomena-based instruction in mind. So our teachers are very excited about this pilot. We have, close to ninety percent of our teachers are included in the pilot. This is a shorter-term pilot, just in terms of what they offer at the company, so this is a one-month duration, they'll be piloting a whole module, and then we'll be able to make a decision or further investigation after that. There's a quick video.
Science class is about to change, and we can't wait! With TWIG Science Next Gen, we get to be volcanologists, movie makers, and air race pilots, leading our own incredible investigations to gain the skills and knowledge to make sense of real-world phenomena, and develop ingenious solutions to real-life problems. Designed for the next-generation science standards, with scientists from Imperial College London, and with 3D assessments from Stanford's scale team, TWIG Science Next Gen helps all students succeed, no matter how we like to learn, because every lesson is different. One day, we're collaborating on hands-on investigations and developing models. The next, we're analyzing data in a digital lab, using interactive simulations that look like video games, and there are hundreds of short films that look as good as movies, which let us explore phenomena we wouldn't normally experience. We travel around the world, connecting with scientists and engineers to get inspired by their careers and learn about their research, which develops our own knowledge. Our claims, evidence, and reasoning are recorded in our digital or printed TWIG journals, and 3D assessments highlight our strengths, as well as where we need support. TWIG Science Next Gen gives us the experience, the skills, and the confidence to know we can succeed. We can be scientists, understanding the world, changing lives, and shaping the future.
I can't do much better than that, so I would be excited to be in that class. So I'm, I'm really excited for both the iReady pilot and the TWIG pilot to see what that bears out for us, and I will have updates for you if the pilots are approved at the end of those pilots with the direction that we're headed.
One quick question.
Yes.
So these pilots, when would they be implemented? After, in September?
Yes, at the beginning of the school year, we would be implementing the pilot to give us enough time to then make a decision afterwards and then revise our curriculum to have spring approval for next year. So then with that comes some resource, a resource extension for our K-5 Math. So currently, we have had Math in Focus for, I believe it's seven or eight years now, and we are just looking to extend that for one more year so that we can conduct this pilot, gather the feedback, make an informed decision, and then revise the curriculum for implementation the 25, 26 school year. So we are looking to extend Math in Focus by one year. There is a total cost there, that is for the consumables, the eighty-three thousand, and that would be broken up and used by building funds. We are looking to also purchase the digital licenses, and more information about the, the cost of the digital licenses will be presented next week on June tenth. That would be funded through Ready to Learn.
So the question I have about this, so this is just while the other pilot for the other resource is going on.
Yes, yes.
Understood. So is there, what would be, in the hypothetical, the, the transition, because now, seven, eight years now is a long time to have this particular system?
Absolutely.
So resource, rather, curriculum?
Yes, and they are different in terms of pedagogical content, so, and approach. So what we would be doing is really focusing on developing those pilot teachers who we then would hope would become kind of the building leaders. And there, we have grade-level representation and building representation. So throughout the year, they will be developed, as we are also working to develop all of our teachers with mathematical practices and mathematical thinking. So through that, we would then work throughout the spring and the summer to make sure that our teachers would be prepared for implementation next fall, in the fall of 2025.
Okay. And is there, in the pilot, representation from every grade?
Every grade and every building.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Would you be able to go back the one slide to the science one?
Yes.
That one? Now, this is a one-month trial?
This is one month, that is the longest pilot they, they would
And it's four thousand dollars for one month. If we like it, what does it run then?
We would have to get quotes beyond that pilot. Right now, we're just looking at the pilot, and then we would come back and get the quote for the full implementation. Again, similar to the iReady pilot, the pilot cost is only for the professional development. That includes two professional development sessions with our science teachers, one at the beginning prior to implementation of the pilot, and then one midway throughout the, the month, so that they feel supported. There's also office hours that they provide with those funds so that teachers can reach out to a representative. They want the pilot to be a success, right? So that funding is really for the teacher's development so that they're able to use the resource effectively throughout the entire module.
And this is able to be used in all grades in the middle school?
Yes, this would be in grade six, seven, and eight, and we do have representation from every grade level and every, every building.
So what would the sequence in science be if we went this route?
So it would be a blend of Earth and Space, Life, and Physical Science. As we know, there is a lot of integration in science. You could look at a pipe, and there's physical implications of that pipe, there are properties that you need to look at, there are environmental considerations, so it's really a blend of, of science there. Now, they do offer a domain-specific sequence of units, so they kind of tease that out. We could go both ways. Our science teachers are very interested in thinking about integration at this point, so we do want to kind of explore what that would look like. It would just continue to cycle back throughout the years. Students would get experiences in all three domains throughout their three years of science, which would hopefully better prepare them for the PSSA with the new STEEL standards.
That was going to be my question with regard to adopting a new resource to, to meet the STEEL standards. So would we, we need to figure out a new resource regardless, correct?
We do. Our, our current Resource Discovery Ed will be out of subscription at the end of next year, so that's why we want to conduct this pilot, to then do our curriculum revision in time for that.
And have it reflect the STEEL standards?
Yes, yes.
Okay, understood.
The other piece of it, as we engage in the math curriculum writing, we will need to extend our K-5 science program as well. Our, our elementary teachers have been diligently at work, they've had social studies review, they've had an ELA review in the past two years, now they're doing math, and so we don't want to overload them, right, doing two major areas at, in one year. So we're looking to extend science just for two years. We are going to do some light curriculum revision in aligning to the STEEL standards. HMH Science Dimensions is aligned to the NGSS standards, which are very closely aligned to our STEEL standards. So we're going to just revise our, our curriculum guides to reflect those STEEL standards, continue to focus on what the shift to the STEEL standards looks like in terms of instructional practice and incorporating those science and engineering practices, while then we will start to think about curriculum revision, a potential pilot, and a new resource next spring throughout the following year. So we are looking to seek approval for a resource extension for two years for science.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mrs. O'Sullivan, Ms. Dreisbach, and Mrs. Ranko. The next item is the Flexible Instructional Day, the FID plan. Dr. Russell.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. And so I just wanted to review with the board in public some of the aspects of our FID, which is our Flexible Instruction Day Plan. And this is an opportunity the state has afforded school districts in the event of inclement weather or emergencies. School districts are permitted to use up to five FIDS, or Flexible Instruction Days, as a way to avoid adding days to the calendar. And we are, we have been working with our teachers on lesson planning for these days. Most often, if we think back to when we were engaged in virtual instruction, our students relied upon Google Classroom. And that was how they got the information from their teachers about what to do, or what they did beyond some of that synchronous instruction. So a FID would be very similar in that regard, where we do have some questions, as if we lose power, for example, or, in the case of some of our youngest learners, them accessing the internet to get to those assignments. So we're working on that, and thinking about FID folders, if you will, for some of our youngest learners, while our older learners would rely upon their Google Classroom and communicating with their teachers via the internet. Now, if the internet goes down, power's out for everybody, and we can't hold school, then it could actually be a day. We use one of our three built-in days, or it's a day added to the end of the year, depending upon where we might be in that. One thing I want to ask the board, as part of the request for this, for approval of the plan, is for the opportunity to consider exceptions. Right now, we operate our practices that we use the three built-in days before we go to, say, a virtual day. And again, options are increasing for us. We learned this year, as of December twenty-three, that we could count hours instead of days, not necessarily both anymore. So the legislation changed. So schools have more flexibility. We have a virtual program, so we have some sense of how to lead students through a virtual setting. For some, that works better than others. We know that. And then we have FIDS. We have the opportunity to apply for these Flexible Instruction Days. So there, there's some flexibility for school districts in how they facilitate learning for their students, particularly during inclement weather or emergencies. My request to the board would be, if there are extenuating circumstances, like a flood, I think we had two flood days this year, would the board be amenable to maybe calling a FID as opposed to using one of our three built-in days? And that's what you see in the exception there, and that's part of the plan. Again, it would be a professional judgment on the part of myself, along with, I typically work with Mr. Fabrizio and Cabinet when making these decisions about doing something different on a day where there's inclement weather or the threat of it. But in some of our conversations with teachers, this was also appealing to them. Let's not waste a day on something like that if we are able to carry out instruction. Because again, part of the philosophy of the board in the past has been, let our students experience snow days. We, we want that for them. I think our teachers do, too. But that exception up there takes us to an example like flooding, and where bridges are closed and we can't operate, or we can't get to all students. So if the board is amenable to that, I would be appreciative of that. And I think it would serve our students and our staff well. These are the detailed schedules, and this is what was proposed to the state outside of this kind of detail about special areas, trying to be efficient, and considering how we deliver special area instruction as part of our FID schedule to our elementary students. And one idea that's taken, that's really gained some momentum, is assigning a special area to a particular grade. So kindergarten would experience library, regardless of the letter day. First grade would experience music, regardless of the letter day. And that streamlined some of the preparation on the part of our special area teachers, and that was appealing to them. So this, this indicates to you the details. There's some synchronous, as well as some asynchronous learning opportunities, and some expectations that for our youngest learners, we would have that backup FID folder at home for them to rely upon, so that they have work and can continue through the learning that's happening in class. Any questions on the FID schedule? And I would ask the board to take action this evening when we get to that item on the agenda, so that an affirmation statement signed by Ms. White can be submitted to the state.
I have one question about the exceptions. So with those extenuating circumstances, floods, et cetera, if there are individual students or pockets of our community that are actually impacted firsthand, what happens then? Do those, is there like an exception to the exception? Like, what happens with those families that are impacted in that way?
So if I understand your question, I'm not sure I do. So you can help me if I, if I don't get this right. But what, one of the considerations that we've made is that there may be some students without power, but not all students without power.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay. And so part of what we've built in is a three-day period for students to submit an assignment. So if they can't get it to their teacher that day, or they can't respond in a way that would otherwise be expected, accommodations will be made for those students. And then that represents really their attendance. And that's something that the state has supported, too, in, in some of what's presented.
So that's on a case-by-case basis, as they're impacted individually?
Yes.
If the school district is open with this flexible instruction, open?
Yep.
With this flexible instruction day, if there are families that are unable to perform during that time?
Right.
Okay.
So, and, and that's really important, because as we were developing this plan with our staff, it was really about, these days being as meaningful as possible, being as robust as possible, and being accessible. Because we know that some first or second graders may not be home with support from parents. They may be with a relative, with a babysitter, in a preschool or daycare center. So we recognize that it, it won't always be accessible, and we need to take that into consideration. And so that would be the way that we would do that.
Okay.
So to mention, or to kind of play off of Ms. White's comments, would that be then looked at basically as just an absent stay?
It, it could be. And then what, what we've written into the plan, and some of what the state has even suggested, is if you, if a student turns in that assignment or the work within three days, they get credit for being there. Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Liggett?
Do we need to have the call-out exceptions for environmental circumstances, et cetera? Can this just be at your discretion?
That, that's the way I would pose it to the board. I mean, I'm calling it out to be very explicit. It's in the plan right now. So if you approve the plan, you're essentially approving the superintendent being able to exercise a professional judgment on a day like that.
Yes, because when, when you do read this, it has the call-outs. But when you get to the last phrase, that's essentially your decision.
Yes. Right. Just like a snow day, only this would change us, shift us from using those three days up right away, out of the gate, to instead, maybe not using one of those three days because of the circumstances, and us being able to potentially hold a FID.
And is that, that's built in there as well? Because I'm reading the one portion of the draft where it says that basically, once the three days of built-in inclement weather days have been exhausted, the district will announce FID. Do you need to modify that statement, so that you can use the FID at any time that you would prefer?
So I think the statement before that is intended to offer that exception. Otherwise, that would be our practice. We would use those three days. So if, if there is a way to revise that, that would make more sense, certainly.
Do we need to make that revision tonight and now, since you asked for action on this, tonight?
I felt as if the second bullet covered it. But if there's a question about that, we can, we can modify it.
So I guess the, if we don't use, historically, if we don't use the three built-in inclement weather days, we end earlier.
Correct.
So I guess it would be which comes first. And, and that, that could be at your discretion. I'm just curious as to how it would be, and, and the timeline, it would be communicated. So in other words, there's that anticipation of, are we going to have a snow day? You know, this adds another layer. So I'm just, you know, people in the community, I think parents want the most notice as possible. So if it's a flexible instruction day, that may be, you know, one path of plan for parents, if it's, you know what I'm saying?
Right. And so, and, and I don't know, Mr. Liggett, if you feel comfortable with the way things are presented here. In terms of communication, that is outlined in the plan. We have to be very careful and comprehensive with our community about communication. If this is a, an inclement weather day, school is closed, we're using one of our three days. If we call a FID day, then that's how, and that's redundant, I'm sorry. If we call a FID, that's very specific, and has a meaning that we need to help our communities, our parents, understand. So there's a communication plan as part of this, that we need to get started on right away, once it's, once it's approved. And we'd like to start that at the end of this year, even through the summer. And then at the beginning of next year, our teachers have some plans to talk about it at Meet the Teacher Night. So again, really want to make sure there's a common understanding of the lingo, or the language that would be used, if school would need to be canceled.
I mean, I think it's clear. The only thing, I mean, the only thing, maybe if you really wanted to tighten it up on that third bullet, you could say, unless the exception were to be utilized, once the three build in, then it's very, then that just clarifies it even more, that unless you're using that exception, you're going to be using the three days first, and then the FID.
Okay.
That language can, you know, unless you're utilizing the exception. But I think your exception is clear. You gave examples. Your examples could be environmental circumstances. It could be an escaped prisoner, because, you know, that happened recently. I mean, it's pretty much your discretion. But if you're not using the exception, if we don't have one of those outstanding, outlandish circumstances, then you're going to go by the typical three days first, then FID.
Yes.
And moving it that way.
Yes. Yes. Okay, I can, I can add that statement, if that's helpful. I appreciate the suggestion, if, Mr. Liggett, you agree with that. Does that support what you were questioning?
Yes, pretty much. I mean, I would prefer to see as much flexibility in doing this as possible for you as superintendent, so that you could even declare a FID before we use inclement, inclement weather days, if circumstances warrant it.
That's, I think that's what I was getting at as well, because I think, you know, with, with regards to the end of the year, when you're looking at those three days, maybe the FID would be preferable to the inclement weather days if their ending is earlier.
Right. Because, you know, you've heard me say, when we survey our community, fifty percent want to start before Labor Day, fifty percent want to start after. And it's forty-nine, fifty-one, but a hundred percent want to get out as early as possible in June. That, that's consistent. So you're right. And we did talk about that with our staff. So there is that excitement around a snow day, and excitement for our students, even staff, when they come up. It's kind of a nice break. However, some of these weather days we've had haven't really been fun for our students. They've really been more difficult for our transportation system to get to all of our kids. So yes, I appreciate.
Weather day in September, not so much. But March?
Right.
I'll, I'll take a snow day. You know, like, we're all kind of feeling it come March. But, no, I think if you have your, if you make it very clear that you're, you know, there are going to be times when you need to have wiggle room, I think then it may, then we're in the clear. But otherwise, you know, you're going to try and do the traditional, let the kids have a snow day.
Right.
And then you're meeting everyone kind of in the middle. There's that give and take.
Yes. And that's the idea. That's the spirit of it. Yeah. Great. Appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
And so this is the detailed schedule. You've seen that before. This is here for the public. Any other questions on FIDS? If you can transition. So I just wanted to start a conversation with our board about translation services. And really, these are, I, I mentioned initially in the draft slides, this is an idea. And I've learned this from individuals that have come to us from other districts. So some background, the number of languages spoken by our students is increasing. And the number of ELL, or English Language Learners, multilingual students is increasing. We know that. You've added staff. You've supported us adding staff this past year. Translation services, which are sometimes required, are extremely expensive, and there aren't many vendors out there. So a unique idea, kind of an outside-of-the-box way of thinking about it, is, I'm taking this from a nearby district, is tapping into our staff or community for translation services. So if we have staff that speak Spanish fluently, and are comfortable supporting translation services with a family, can we consider, maybe that's part of co-curricular eventually, but can we consider tapping into individuals on our staff or in our community who would meet certain criteria? We have to establish those. This is really an initial conversation for the board. But can we think differently about how we access translation services when they're needed? Again, I think it, it allows us to maximize a resource in our community. It's Spanish and Arabic that are the two most common language, languages that we need to translate. And we have individuals in our community among us that speak these languages. We'd like to take advantage of that.
I don't mean to be negative, Nancy, legally speaking. When you're talking FERPA, and you're talking about students with IEPs, and evaluation reports, and reevaluation reports, I don't know that I'm necessarily comfortable using cost effectiveness as a reason to not use a translation service, and looking to the community, and having a community member or a staff member translate. I'd feel more comfortable legally, having an organization be required to do the legal documents. I think it's different when you're talking about classroom documents and day-to-day, you know, here's a field trip form, here's, you know, the things that are just coming out. But when we're talking about the legal documents that come by way of special education, and we're talking about FERPA, I feel more comfortable using an actual organization that is tasked and legally bound. I don't know. I don't know if we have way in, Mr. Subers?
You could. Why would it, I'm not sure if these people would be compensated, if they would be retained as consultants under independent contractors. And if that were the case, then, and they, if they were being provided access to the information for a legitimate educational purpose, they would be permitted access to that information under FERPA. We have sample independent contractor agreements we use for, for different things, that have confidentiality requirements in them. The competency issue is, is another question. I mean, I guess we would have to have some method of assuring that whoever we're choosing to do, you know, provide the translation, can do it competently, you know, so as to satisfy our requirement to accurately report that information to the parent and, and/or student.
And, and I really appreciate your comment, Dr. Campley. There are some situations where we would not rely upon our staff or the community to do this. We don't envision that. But when we have, say, a conversation about a poor choice made on the part of a student, and we have a translation service on a phone in a conference room, it's much more amenable to the conversation to have a live person sitting there with us. And, and we've, we've struggled with that a little bit, because our staff want to feel comfortable doing that. If they're compensated, if they're covered, if there's clear criteria and requirements to meet, that they feel confident and comfortable they've met, then we would operate that way. But there are certainly some things around IEP documents that, that have raised questions for us. But it is, it is a territory I'd really like to explore. And then we'll, we'll think about, where do we draw some lines and rely upon some professional services?
No, and I think that makes complete sense. Having a conversation, you know, if a parent comes in and you want to go over some different things about a student's progress, very different. But when you start, when you have a parent come in and you're going over what is the, you know, you want to explain to them what a permission to evaluate is, and you're, now you're talking about the testing guidelines. You know, now you're getting into the competency, what Mr. Subers said, because now you're talking legal terms. And that conversation looks very different than talking about just a student's progress. So I think as long as there's very clear, you know, maybe some ARs built around it, where the principals and the staff know, okay, we've got to the point where now we're talking about things that are very specific, legal, we need to now have somebody who has that competency to speak to those things. Because translation is very difficult when you start speaking in terms of psychometrics and things of that nature.
Right. Yeah. And I, I appreciate you calling that out, absolutely. Yeah, and I, I appreciate you calling that out, absolutely. So, again, we, we have some work to do in delineating where might we tap into such resources? Where would we consider, where, excuse me, where would we continue with the professional vendors we use now? And some of them are through the IU, just terribly expensive. And we think in some cases it might even be more intimate to approach it this way for our families and for our students. So, I agree. The other thing I'll mention is you also see Parent Square on the agenda tonight, which is a mass communication system. It is being proposed to replace Blackboard. It also has a translation piece to it that we believe could be more effective than Google Translate, for example, which sometimes we use to help us when we're communicating with families who don't speak as fluent English as, as maybe would help them to understand some of what we're trying to share with them. So, I appreciate.
Sort of on the, on the flip side as well, I know there have been times in the past, maybe not nearly as frequently now, but trying to find a translator even through the IU was near impossible to do. And yet, we had people in the community that were readily able to do it. But, I mean, I think the idea is great, tapping into the community, I think it's good community outreach, it's good community involvement, and as long as it's something that can be done without having to worry about any of the legal aspects of it, I think it'd be a great idea to pursue and at least look into.
Well, especially if there are designated partnership agreements. You know, then there's some kind of some skin in the game to uphold a certain, you know, level of ethics in terms of that. Especially, obviously, if they're already an employee, then that kind of takes care of itself. Are there employees that speak Arabic?
I don't believe we have.
Spanish, obviously, obviously French.
Yes, we have Spanish, we have some Russian language spoken. We actually may have Arabic.
But just out of curiosity, I guess my thought would be, you know, that would be the first line of defense and then.
Right, right, staff, yes. Yeah, and, and we want to put some measures in place so that our staff feel comfortable extending themselves in this way. This is a new and different path for them to take.
We should protect them as well, right.
Yes, exactly. And so, we, we have lots more conversation to have, and I'll certainly work with Mr. Subers once we sort of delineate when we might tap into or take this path versus some of the more traditional ones with the IU or TransAct services, you know, where we have a phone in the middle of the table and an individual translating for us. But it's an idea I wanted to just get started, float out there.
I think it's actually something too, that's also been done for a long period of time with student to student. You get a student who comes in, who's new, and speaks a different language. It is common practice to be able to find another student to pair them up with who also speaks their language. So, that's student to student, so this is just a slight extension from that.
And, and our world language mentors, you heard Dr. Champagne Lee reference them again this year. That's been a very successful program where high school students who speak certain languages have visited our elementary schools and been paired up with elementary students who are English Language Learners. And that has been extremely positive for our elementary students. So, student to student in that regard also, you know, we've tapped into what our high school students have to offer, and it's been really powerful in these experiences, so.
Dr. Russell?
Yeah.
It seems like, and I, I fully support this idea, that this can become a service opportunity for the community as well. If you were to put out, because obviously the different translation services, depending on what's going to be translated, is going to require different levels of, let's say, engagement or, you know, depth in, in the districts, wherever it's an employee or an NDR, et cetera. I, I think that developing a voluntary translation corps where people can say, that are not necessarily members, you know, that are staff members, but, you know, I can speak these services and make that available to the district. So, if there's a need for something that is not, they, nor, nor, just normal translation services, nothing that's potentially going to create a legal problem, that'd be a great thing to, to get out there. And in this way, it's a ready resource for admin or anybody in the district administration that would need that. So, how to put out a party invitation in Russian because you want to do this? If you can, if you have a source to do that, that would, that would be an incredible service. And I, I think, again, it's a community outreach thing, because that's where we're really going to find this, is to go out into the community and find people that speak Kumira or other languages that we're not going to find in the district.
Right, I agree, yeah, I agree. So, I, I very much appreciate the support for the idea. And, and I'll continue to develop it with our team and report back to the board. And, like I said, work with Mr. Subers on some of the details of the legal aspects.
The only other thing I was, as Mr. Leggett was, was talking about, the community piece of it, I'm wondering if our sinus would perhaps have some resources as well to tap into with regards to, you know, fluency.
Yeah, I can speak with Mr. McKinney offline maybe and learn more about some possibilities there too, because our sinus students already mentor our middle school students, they serve in that capacity. That too has been a very powerful program for our middle school students, so.
Students and staff, yeah.
Yeah, so, so maybe there are some possibilities there, and we can talk maybe a little bit more about it offline. Yeah, thank you.
Wonderful.
Okay, let's see what else we have here. Okay, so let, let's talk a little bit about enrollment and staffing. And we, we have been incorporating our enrollment numbers as up-to-date. These are real-time numbers, as of Friday afternoon, this is where we are with, as of May 30th. Okay, so Thursday afternoon, excuse me, this is where we are with enrollments. And what we project as we roll students over into next year, what we anticipate in terms of average class size and staffing needs. And, and I'm going to focus on the elementary just for a few minutes, because I want to recognize publicly some of the parent voices that have reached out to us. And I, and I want to honor those voices and let those parents know that we are hearing them and we are listening to them. And as an administrative team, really thinking carefully about how we might approach supporting students in different grades based upon where some view class sizes are raising some questions. Now, we have the policy here, you typically see the guidelines presented in Policy 126. And as you look across the chart, for example, you can see that there is the attempt for consistency from one building to another, and sometimes one or two, three students can really change that average as you see it. But I wanted the board to know and the public to know that in addition to thinking about class size or student ratio per teacher, we also think about some of the other resources. We consider them as we consider the full picture of what we do to support our students most effectively. We are very fortunate in our school district to have what's viewed in the county as very reasonable class sizes. And I'm very appreciative of this board's support over the years to keep our class sizes to more of a minimum as opposed to pushing on that upper end, as you heard earlier from the public. In addition to very reasonable class sizes, we've been fortunate to have a strong paraprofessional team that supports classroom instruction and special education services. We also have co-teachers. So, in each of these grades, for the most part, in each building, there tends to be at least one co-taught class. That means there's a classroom across a grade level where special education students would be clustered or grouped so that they can most efficiently be supported in terms of their needs. And in some cases, have a second teacher on a regular basis in that classroom, that's a co-teacher. That's another resource that we think about as we consider how we staff classrooms. And then lastly, I'll mention that at least in eighth grade, we separate, we, we start to shift our students around for math based upon where they are in terms of their readiness as a mathematical thinker. That tends to bring in a gifted services teacher or another teacher so that we divide the classes by one more when it comes to math. So, again, just another resource as we think about all that we consider when putting together the puzzle or the full picture really of classes and the number of staff we need, those are some of the things that I just want to make sure I mention as part of what administration is considering. And what I would like to offer the board is that we will continue to monitor for a bit longer these enrollments, because there, there have been a couple of requests from different grade levels across different buildings. And they all come with strong advocacy for what's best for students. So, administration is really trying to be very careful and thoughtful about the needs of our students and where we are within those class size recommendations, those guidelines, and what we do with the resources we have or what we might ask you for. We've come to you before in August, because while students withdraw during the summer, they also enroll. And so, sometimes we see that fluctuation, and we've come to you and asked for a staff member. So, right now, I wanted to really just offer you that explanation and let you know that principals and I, along with Dr. Dietrich and some of the representatives of our curriculum and instruction team, Mr. Moran, continue with these conversations.
Can I just make one, or ask just one question? There have been a tremendous number of responses and comments that were made. Are the people that are making those comments being responded to? And is there any plan specific to them yet?
So, that's a good question, and I did talk a little bit about this with Ms. White. I wanted to make a public statement tonight, and I, I have not responded to the emails individually. However, I've been weighing whether or not to do that, almost as a boilerplate response, that these are the things that we think about, explaining what I just explained to them in a response. Because they, they have taken the time to send us an email, to send you as a board an email, and express with compassion what they believe is best for their children, and that's what we want. We want parents to advocate for their children. So, I probably will prepare something and send it out to them. Again, I want to honor their words, let them know they are being heard, and, and really, what they are suggesting being thoughtfully considered.
So, one of the things that you and I have discussed, Dr. Russell, is the cohorts of students and the change that they're seeing. So, the fourth grade students, for example, obviously on the top, are the fifth grade students on the bottom. And so, when I, when I look at that and I look at those numbers, it, the net change is sometime, it's, you know, positive or negative, two or three kids in a lot of, lot of cases, right? So, for example, Schwenksville, there's eighteen in the fourth grade class on, that's the, that's in each class, correct? There is a jump to twenty-four next year. So, that, that change is much more significant, you know, on paper. So, that's the first, my first line of thinking. My second line of thinking is of, you know, the makeup of the particular cohort, like what type of kids are in each, are in each cohort, building to building? So, you know, and then we heard Mr. McGill speak a little bit about his advocacy for the smaller class sizes. So, one of the things that I had talked to you about was taking a look at the policy with regards to class size overall and marrying it with some data in terms of best practice of class sizes. But, you know, I appreciate the response of administration, not only, you know, at district office, but also in every building, really making conscientious choices of what's best for kids. And then, obviously, what's best for teachers, because what's best for, you know, we need both things to happen at the same time in order for kids to have a successful year. And then layering in other services to help support the classrooms. So, can you talk a little bit about, more about the support of individual classrooms and cohorts above and beyond just the way the numbers look?
Yeah, so, depending upon the makeup of a class, if there are small groups, for example, of special education students, there are special education teachers and special education services that those students receive, and they are eligible to receive and entitled to. There are paraprofessionals that also support, there are Title I assistants in some of our schools. Those, those are individuals above and beyond, again, to level the playing field is the theory of action for some of our students. Our highest achieving learners receive gifted services, and again, that is intended to enrich their experiences. When they get to fifth grade, they are able to sort of pair off a little bit and begin to experience math in a different way if they're at a readiness for that. That helps create smaller math classes, because we're creating another section relying upon a gifted services teacher. Or, in the case of one building, it'll be some switching of a fourth, a gifted will teach fourth grade, and then a fourth grade teacher will come up and teach fifth grade. But, but the end, the outcome is that we create another section and reduce the numbers for students in math in fifth grade. So, so these are some of the resources and services that are provided to students to really support their learning. And then, of course, we continue to provide professional learning to our teachers. We recognize, and I, I agree with what Mr. McGill offered, that students are presenting differently today than they did a few years ago. And we recognize that means we need to meet them where they are and continue to move them forward. So, what does that look like on our end? I think a policy conversation is, is a worthwhile conversation. If you look at class size recommendations for fifth and sixth grade, they go up to twenty-seven students. So, we actually are at the lower end with twenty-four students in fifth grade. And we've had twenty-seven students in fifth grade in the past. Right now, that, that's creating a feeling of being unsettled just because of what our students have been through, and they've moved through classes in the lower grades with fewer numbers, but that's not unusual. We want our youngest learners to have the smallest classes, research supports that. We want to give them the most attention if possible. So, it's not unusual to see those class sizes naturally increase a little bit as students age and move up through the grades. So, we don't have the same class sizes in eighth grade necessarily that we have in first or second grade. So, the priorities shift a little bit and look a little bit different. It doesn't mean it wouldn't be nice for our teachers and nice for our students, but that's just not typically how the operation of our schools and staffing allocations work.
So, I guess, and I appreciate, I, I mean, some of it I, I agree and I understand already, but just for the purposes of letting everybody hear the same message, that's part of the reason that I asked the question. The other portion of that, these numbers reflect the, the allocation of that student to that classroom teacher. But, so what I'm hearing you say is that there's a, I guess, a pretty significant period of the day where all of those kids are not together at the same time in the classroom, is that?
That, that is correct. So, math would be an example of that. If students receive special education services for ELA reading, for example, they would potentially be pulled out, or they would be supported by another individual, a special education teacher or even a paraprofessional in a small group setting. So, oftentimes, we want our students, our special education students, to be a part of the whole group lesson. However, beyond that, there's often small group instruction that's happening that can bring in additional resources or at times pull students from the classroom into a setting where they're, it's more conducive to their learning and supportive of them. We want all students to be included, to be exposed to that tier-one curriculum, that, that grade-level curriculum. Beyond that, some of our students need some, some really targeted support. We offer that through intervention, and we also offer that through some of the other resources we have to offer.
So, with a, with a less, with less sections in some of the grade levels, are there designated supports established for the transition of that, of the fewer? In other words, if, if there's five sections of something, now there's four sections of the grade, you still have the same number of children.
Right.
Are there established building-level supports per grade? Or how, how are you allocating the support services to help compensate for the fewer sections?
Okay, so, one of the, that's, that's a, that's a very helpful question. One of the things that our principals do is they consider how to be as resourceful as possible with paraprofessional supports. Our elementary schools have a certain number of paraprofessionals, they're regular ed paraprofessionals. There are also special education paraprofessionals that support special education teachers. And they attempt to be as resourceful. And they attempt to be as resourceful as possible with those resources when class sizes might change because students are getting older and there are fewer classes per grade level than maybe there were previous years. And there's some flexibility on the part of our principals to do that. They want the best learning experiences for our students. And so, they work diligently to take advantage of the resources that they have available and there's some flexibility. We've also talked about, as we look at this year concluding and the needs of some of our students changing, some students have a one-on-one. Next year, they may not need that one-on-one. So, how do we reallocate that resource in a way that could support different situations but benefit our kids? So, we think about that, too.
If looking, and...
Go ahead.
In looking at the allocation of teachers and sections and that kind of thing, how much, if any, input from the current teachers and staff of that building is given? I mean, does it, in other words, is it just looking at the numbers at this level or are we looking at the numbers based on what the teachers are actually saying?
So, typically, the way it works is principals are the voice for their teachers in their buildings. They come to Dr. Dietrich, they've come to Mr. Moran, and they've come to me and they've advocated for what they believe their buildings will benefit from to maximize experiences for kids next year. Now, this year, we have heard directly from some teachers, they've advocated because, again, as Mr. McGill mentioned, students are presenting a little bit differently and they want to get this right and they want to support students as much as possible. So, there certainly have been a couple of comments from teachers, hey, Dr. Russell, this would really help if we could have X. But primarily, those conversations happen with principals and us as a team. And so, you know, and I'm respectful and appreciative of the advocacy for our students on the part of our teachers or our principals. At the same time, I want to be fiscally responsible and consider striking the right balance.
So, in general, my personal philosophy is really to advocate not only for what's best for students, but also what's best for teachers and staff. And I, you know, I think a lot of us have done that consistently. And I obviously believe that, wholeheartedly, that that's what administration is looking to do as well. What, if, without listening, I'm sorry, let me rephrase. Taking into account all of the feedback that we've gotten with advocacy for lower class sizes, you know, which I think by and large generally everybody supports, the lowest class sizes possible, at what point, going forward with the recommendation with class sizes for next year, is there an opportunity to raise like kind of a red flag and say, listen, this really isn't working? You know, is there some sort of a path to say, you know, we've gone forward with a conservative number of sections, but we really are seeing a lot of problems and we really should have kept it a different way?
So, does that translate to maybe adding a teacher after the school year starts?
I don't know. Is that, I mean, that to me seems very unconventional, but I just am curious of, you know...
It's happened.
It has happened.
Very rarely. You know, I can think of one incident, I believe it was 6th grade, a couple of years ago. So, it's happened. It is unorthodox. It is unconventional for us. We try to, we try to set things up for students so that we don't need to move them through those changes once the year starts. And like I said before, we've come to you in August before the letters go out. Now, this year it's going to be close because I think August 5th is a date and August 5th is the board meeting, so we got to think about that. But what I would like to suggest to the board is that we will continue to monitor because there isn't just one place where this has raised questions. You've heard from parents of one particular grade. There are other grades here where principals have said, hey, Dr. Russell, we need to think about this. And they're justified. And if you look at the numbers, you can identify those spots, too, where we're getting close. Now, again, we may gain some students, we also lose some students. That's the tendency of what happens over the summer. And you can see, net change tends to be negative. That's where we're trending. If you look at the bottom, you can see that there tends to be students that leave us as opposed to come into us. Now, we can't predict everything that's going to happen this summer, but again, these are some of the things that we're monitoring very closely.
And I guess my other thought, you know, in just looking, you know, at the elementary totals across the board, it's kind of an inequitable amount of students per building as well, right? So, I guess, I don't know at what point, I would like to have a conversation about class size and policy, but the buildings are also only so big, right?
Right.
So, you know, if the class size policy changes, we, I think, and at that point need to take a look at perhaps building allocations for, you know, I don't want to open a can of worms or anything, but I would like to be able to have a conversation proactively to utilize all of our resources and real estate to the best of our capacity.
And I can appreciate that very much and I think that's a conversation that will be upcoming for us as a board to really talk about because right now, our buildings are being utilized a little bit differently than they have been in the past. So, in other words, we have different service providers from the ones that we once had. We have BCBAs, we didn't used to have that. We have school police officers, we didn't used to have that. We have contracted counseling outpatient services, we didn't used to have that. They all need space. We have collaborative space for collaborative conversations to occur that principals and teachers really appreciate. And our buildings are sort of full right now. Even though enrollments have gone down, they're being used, they're being maxed out. So, that's a conversation that I'm engaged with principals around right now and will probably bring to the board later this summer or early in the fall to consider. Are we maximizing our facilities and providing the most positive and equitable educational experiences to our students?
I appreciate that. And I think taking a look at building allocations in conjunction with class sizes, you know, if all of us have the same goal of small class sizes, if that comes with having to reallocate buildings, then I think that that's a, it's a compromise and kind of a give and take of sorts.
Yes, yes.
So, I just, I understand that there are many, so many things at play, but again, you know, forcing, you know, skip back, for example, to have 566 students, I think there's more students there than there are at West. So, that to me is mind blowing when you look at the size of the building, et cetera. So, I just think that if we can readjust based on what our needs are, I think that also makes good fiscal sense to your point about being fiscally responsible.
Yes, thank you.
You know, a couple of years ago, we had the issue, it was Evergreen needed 3rd grade and I was a big advocate on we needed to get another teacher. But it was very different. They had a clear need that was very different than everybody else on the paper, right? Like, they stood out like a sore thumb. When you look at this and you look across the board, on paper, it's pretty even as far as what each school, what each class size is. Now, I will definitely agree, we need to revisit 27 students. That day and age is gone. We are not in any place, even colleges and universities are trying to steer clear of those numbers. You know, we really do need to revisit that. But in general, when you look at it as far as equity and what each school is being allotted as far as how many students per class, it looks great. My concern comes into what parents are emailing. Now, I will say, that's one group. It doesn't mean that there aren't those concerns other places, it's just that particular group is what I've heard. I feel like there can be pockets of concerns when you get certain behaviors or personalities or groups of students who have different concerns, that then they, due to their needs, they have, because of their needs, they require more. I'm not saying we need that the fix is to give another teacher, but I think maybe, you know, the way you do round tables with the community, maybe there needs to be some sort of round table with that class to kind of, for the principal of that building, once you and the principal and things have been hashed out to say, hey, we hear your concerns, more so than just a boilerplate email, to say, we hear your concerns, this is how we're going to address those concerns in a way that doesn't require an entire teacher because that's really putting a Band-Aid on it. This is how it's going to look in a different manner. It's not that we're not going to do something, but we're not necessarily adding another entire class. I just feel like there needs...
Like a grade level forum or...
Yeah, something to kind of address the needs of that group and how are we going to meet the behavioral needs of this class and what these parents are concerned about and not make them feel like, okay, well, yes, on paper it looks great, but we do have these needs and how is it going to be addressed? Because I heard all the things that are being done and I get the, you know, math, we divide them up more. Sounds great, but when you have a lot of kids with a lot of behavioral concerns, it can sound great all you want, but if you have three kids eloping and somebody tossing a desk, it doesn't feel all that great.
Nobody's tossing desks.
I'm just saying. I'm just saying, if you have some major behavioral concerns going on, and I don't know what the level of behavioral concerns are that are happening that are causing these parents to send these emails, but maybe there needs to be some sort of forum that says, hey, this is how we're going to address these specific behavioral concerns to meet your needs, more so than the blanketed, this is what in general we've done.
Yeah.
I agree with what Dr. Campley was saying there about, we need to communicate this. There needs to be an engagement and an understanding at the level where the people are really feeling this class size issue. One of the things, when I look at the enrollment reports here and the projections that we have up on the screen, part of the problem is I do the math and I look at it, I read across and I'm like, well, just like 5th grade, if I look at that, everybody is basically right at 24, maybe plus or minus a point five. We talked about the policy there and my ears always perk up when we talk about policy. If we were to adjust the policy, say, for 5th grade, right now it's 23 to 27. If we were talking about this in the policy meeting and I were to bring up, let's move the top of the 5th and 6th grade from 27 down to, I don't know, let's say 24, everybody would look at me and say, that's a really major move, taking three there. That's where we're at, though, is we're right there at that lower end of that, of the scale for the policy at 24. Currently, it's 23 to 27 is where it can be. So, like I said, if I were to set the top at 24, which is where we essentially are right now and are, I'm not going to say are, people are expressing concern with it already at 24, I think it's premature to go to policy right now because, like I said, that policy move of going from 27 to 24, that would be drastic. If I were to bring that up in a policy committee meeting, everybody would look at me and go, what are you, you're moving all the way down to the midpoint?
So, I think...
And just one last point, then, when we look at the numbers that are up there on the enrollment report, part of what I said is we look at the class size. We look at the number that's in a building and we're looking at that staff number there. And so, we're thinking that the staff number is one per class and we do it there. And in the conversations that we're having here is that's not an accurate representation of the staff that is actually providing service to that class, whether that class be at 24, 23.5. And I don't think that that enrollment report is the right place to count other helpers that are in the classroom. I think we need to at least realize that when we look at this chart, that staff is staff that is specifically assigned to that grade, like a homeroom teacher, that it doesn't mean that those are the only people that are available to help that class. And I don't know if there's a way besides communication to reflect that. Because I wouldn't want to see the numbers in the enrollment report change in the way that they are. They're reflecting an accurate representation currently. Anyway, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Appreciate those. Thank you. Yeah, so, we'll talk more about the possibility of a policy conversation and maybe it's a conversation that takes us to no new recommendations, however, I appreciate your points. And no, we don't represent co-teachers, for example, and they're in there and that's, I think, what you're referring to. So, let me think more about that and how we might help others to, again, develop more of a common understanding of how we support our students and all of the different resources that we tap into. But for now, we'll continue to monitor carefully, closely, what's happening. Middle school and high school, these are less of an issue, if you will. It's really at the elementary level where we think most carefully about class sizes. And this is a chart that you've seen before that just really identifies where we are with staff and what we've done with those staff as our enrollments continue to decline and we need fewer staff. So, we're not replacing a few retirements. They're being reallocated or in one case, has been given back to the board to help balance the budget. So, with that, I really appreciate the conversation, the very thoughtful conversation, and we'll keep the board abreast of what's happening here in the area of enrollments and recommendations for staffing on the part of administration. This is a standard operating procedure. Until September 2024, we need to just review our health and safety plan. It has not changed. I am not recommending any changes. There does not need to be board action because there is no change, but as an exercise, we need to review it. And that ends after September 24 as ESSER funds have ended. So, here it is, no changes. Again, it's a matter of just taking the steps under the law, meeting the letter of the law here. And that's it. Thank you for the time.
Okay, that's back to me, then. Thank you very much, Dr. Russell, Dr. Dietrich. We're on to 4.02 through 4.09. They were all on the Education Committee of the Whole, so if there are no further questions, we will move all of them to consent.
Uh, Dr. Campley, I'd like to take 4.05.
Oh, the SIPs, yes. Okay. We, everything except 4.05 will move to consent and 4.05, we will take off of consent.
And we'll look at some additional information for that next week, correct?
Yep.
Okay, great.
And I'd like to vote no on the remote school day.
We didn't get there yet.
Oh.
Where is that?
It's coming up.
Oh, okay.
Jeez, guys. Okay, moving on to 4.10.
9:50, 9:50, okay.
Moving on to 4.10. The request for action for the approval of the FIT application for the 2024-2025 school year. The motion is to approve this application. I so move for this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Nay.
Ms. Widener, you have that? Okay.
Okay. 4.11, I'm so excited. I got to do this two years in a row now. This is a motion to approve the students that are eligible to graduate. So, the request to approve all 460 students eligible to graduate from Perkium Valley High School on June 7th, 2024 as listed contingent upon their satisfactory completion of the graduate requirements and I so move.
Motion, is there a second? Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Congratulations, class of 2024.
Okay, 4.12 and 4.13 are purchase of, an approval for the purchase of the animatage table and approval of the Delver Valley Consortium. If there are no questions for either of those, we can move them to consent. Okay, seeing none, we'll move them to consent. And 4.14, we already discussed, it's the enrollment...
Enrollment report.
And I'm done.
And that ends your section. Thank you, Dr. Campley. Section 5, Mr. Fountain, Ms. Widener, Mr. Fountain's going to take care of that this weekend next.
All right, and I'm going to let Mr. Weaver take care of the biggest bulk of it for me.
Thank you. You have to turn that on, Jim. Thank you. Thank you. You have to turn that on, Jim. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to bring forward to you tonight a final budget plan. But first, we do have a quick capital projects update for you. I do have Mr. Fabrizio here. Wake up, Joe.
Good morning. Um, actually, we have a custodian that speaks Arabic and one that speaks Korean. So concession stand update, uh, next slide. So we're going to be ready for graduation. The flooring's epoxied now. Um, all the finishing touches are going in. Last thing is a couple of countertops at the roll-up windows and we're done. So we'll have working toilets.
All right, hold on there, Joe. All right, so the next item up is the middle school west and east auditoriums. Mr. Gaddash.
All right, good evening, everyone. So the next few slides, we're going to discuss the upgrades that are much needed at the middle school east and the west auditoriums. To keep it short, we presented this at the safety and ops committee, the state of the auditoriums. And today I'll just summarize what was discussed there. So basically, the crux of it is the lighting and the sound infrastructure in the east and west auditoriums are original to the buildings, meaning they're 25-plus years old. And now we're starting to have these systems fail. Like some, at times they are very unreliable, causing safety issues. So, uh, so we recommend doing some of those upgrades. Considering the magnitude of these upgrades, so we brought in a subject matter expert to do the walkthrough with us to kind of provide us an estimate. Based on the walkthroughs and estimates, it looks like it's going to cost us around 1.3 to 1.5 million dollars to complete these upgrades and bring these auditoriums to optimal functional levels. So again, talking to the business office and discussing the priority of the upgrades and the availability of monies, we divided this project into three phases. We brought it to the safety and operations committee. And with the conversations from the safety and ops, we recommend, it was, safety and ops recommended us to go back and look at certain tasks and move them, move them across phases to see if there's a feasibility to complete these upgrades in two years. So as recommended by the safety and operations committee, so we would like to get the permission from the board to solicit bids for the phase one of this project, which is estimated to cost around 500 to 750,000 dollars in the summer. So middle school east, middle school east will be the venue for the phase one of this project. The entire sound, entire, sorry, entire lighting in middle school east will be upgraded. That includes house lights, the stage lights, the runway lights, and also some of the sound components of the middle school east. So that's what we, that's what we proposed to upgrade this summer for middle school east as phase one. These were the original phase two and phase three that were submitted to the safety and ops committee. But depending on how the phase one goes, this will determine whether there's a phase three needed and hopefully everything gets done in phase two. And again, there'll be a new plan that'll come to the board. Once the phase one is completed, we go back to the drawing, drawing board, draft some plans and come back to the board next school year.
So what would be happening in phase one at West?
At this point, we're not, majority of the money is going to be spent at East. And, and only the safety items is going to be spent at West, which is probably the runway lights and some of the other items that'll be, that'll be done at, that'll be done at West. Majority of the project is going to be done at, at East. Again, East is where like we see a lot of, where in, East is where we see a lot of failures happening. So that's where we want to concentrate majority of the task at, at East. There are some safety items at West that were, that were, like for example, the walkway lights, runway lights, those are the items that will, that will be focusing on West at phase one, but for the majority, the majority of it will be at East.
So there will be components of this list to be addressed this summer at West?
That is correct.
Okay. And is, is West aware of what's going to be updated for them this summer? I'm assuming the answer is yes. I'm just-
Yes, so I've been, I've been, I've been, Mr. Strom is here. So I've been in, um, we've been in touch with Mr. Strom and Mr. Kersinger to develop this plan. So yes, they've been aware of, they've been aware of what's needed.
I think, because the way that our conversation went was that especially if there's safety items, to, to defer them just for phase two, for the sake of it being a phase two, you know, if it's a, if it's a volume issue, that's one component. But, you know, I, I don't want to defer to phase two if, if there's truly need that has to happen in order to create a equitable environment in both east and west auditorium.
Right, so the safety items will be addressed in phase one. That's the reason why the project jumped from initial 500,000 dollars to now with 500 to 750 now. So because those are items will be addressed in, as part of phase one.
Thank you for stating that, just for the record.
Yeah, sure. Um, so again, um, so these were the original phases that was developed. Again, we were trying to move some tasks between the phases to get them accomplished within two years. And here's a tentative timeline, assuming that the board approves our process or, or proposal next week. We, we plan to go to the bids by end of next week. And we expect the bids to be back to the district by 7:18. And assuming that we already have done the walkthroughs with the vendors, we will have a good idea of what the project is. We expect to approve the bids within a day or so. Again, we'll communicate to the board through email or, or through board members and, and, and with the hopes of ratifying that project in August. So there is a timeline. The reason for the urgency is we want this space to be ready by December before the music season begins.
So can you talk a little bit about the investment of the, you mentioned 25 years old with, between the two? Can you talk a little bit about, just for the public as well as the board of the whole, the investment of this as, and what the return will be for the duration of, you know, this, this investment is now, but it will last us X.
Right, so this is a complete overhaul of our system. This includes the infrastructure of the lighting and sounds plus all the fixtures that go on. And so this is a complete overhaul of the auditorium. So this would, I mean, be similar to the system that lasted us 25 years. Our hope, I mean, our, it, it, we expect the systems to last another 20 years. Okay, Mr. Strom, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yep, that would be very fair.
Right, so that is the expectation that this is the money that we spend like once every 20, 25 years. So this is the overall of the entire system. We expect the system to last us another couple of decades. I would be retired by then, but... I hope to be at least.
Jim didn't even get any jokes in tonight yet. Here he comes, wait.
So my big joke was, you realize that we swore in the police officers, but the first award was for an art student that did a donut.
Wait, is that, is that a donut joke?
I, I told Chief Miller about that. He was not very happy about that.
They don't like donut jokes.
Oddly enough, it wasn't here for us to see, was it? So.
Jim, you sure your car's still in the lot?
No, we have a police department.
That's who he's blaming, I think.
Mr. Fabrizio, uh, so additional steps forward in other capital projects?
Sure, so right now we're looking at the replacing Evergreen Playground. It's quite dated. Components are failing. We are working with Lions Recreation to kind of make them whole again, but we are evaluating pricing because it did come in a lot higher than expected. So we're working with the admin team over there to put together a comprehensive plan to move forward. Paving, so we're looking to resurface Schweinsville Playground, Skipback Playground, the Evergreen Kindergarten Playground, district office and the high school teacher lot. They're all in pretty bad disrepair. They've had a lot of injuries from kids falling, gashes, cuts, and all that fun stuff. It's Co-Stars vendor. Total there is around 640,000. Any questions?
Would that be done by the end, uh, by the end of the summer, beginning of the school year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so one of the things that we take, take lessons from, from Dr. Dietrich is, as we sit and we talk about many different types of projects that we're working on, he said, Jim, why don't you just come forward with, here are the projects, here's the cost, here's the funding source, here's a timeline and when the board approval is expected. Set everybody up for success. So this list is showing about $14 million worth of capital projects. Um, and you can see where we're at with those as far as the funding source. So it's very clear for the school board and the public where those monies are coming from. Also, the expected timeline associated with those projects and the board approval when it's determined. So there's quite a few on there for this, this month to be approved. So, and you can see those and tie those in. Of mention, the middle part there where we talk about the fire panels that were brought forward as part of one of Mr. Fabrizio's main focus priorities. We have utilized the DCED grant and you do also see a resolution in there to, to be approved by the school board for tonight, associated with the hopes that we can get the DCED grant to cover that. There is a 25% match associated with that. However, we have submitted the application. The resolution gets passed tonight, hopefully. Then we will send that in. That's the last component we have and then we have to sit and wait. Unfortunately, that's how the grant works. And we do know it's a competitive grant, so it's an uphill battle for us in our current socioeconomic environment compared to all the other school districts that are also applying for that. So we are hopeful, however, the realization is that we might have the need to have other monies to come forward to address those safety issues that we have discussed before. So there you go. That's kind of the component in the slide that you can go to. We can always talk about other types of priorities, but that's kind of what we're focused in on over the next couple of years. Any questions on those? Any questions from the community?
So the only thing that I didn't see as part of your capital projects overview were the additional stadium updates that we were talking about. Oh, it's a coming? Okay, all right. Roll it.
Okay, now, let's get into some budget. All right. So Amy promised me that she wouldn't fall asleep, so during my presentation, so that's good. All right, so the general fund projection update, you can tell where we're at with 126 million, almost 127 million dollars in expected expenditures, 126 million dollars worth of revenues. So essentially what we're saying is we'll have about an $800,000 loss. Now remember, we're super conservative and if you would study all of our projections at this stage in the game, you know that we're super conservative and so this approach is where we're at right now. We feel comfortable with this. We've been tracking a lot of different revenues and a lot of different expenditures all year long and we're pretty confident with providing this number. Again, remember, this is a general guide for us as we continue to move forward with our final budget approval. Again, quick slide to remind everybody that we've utilized additional revenue sources or unassigned fund balances and reserves, rather, to the tune of about 1.17% of expected expenditures. Tonight, I'm happy to bring forward, we made some slight adjustments. We recognized additional earned income tax, which again, I was unwilling to do. However, the past couple of weeks, it's really caught up to and it resembles and reflects where we were last year at this time. So I'm comfortable with that. It also happens to match up with the Berkheimer estimate that we got way back in December as well. So I'm comfortable moving to that spot. We also have an increased expenditure of $120,000 associated with the sub-rate that we adjusted back in October of 2023. We now have history on how we utilize that and Amy and I can now bring forward with an expenditure number to offset that increase that we did in October. It's our first opportunity to do so. Total revenues, 129 million nine, or 275, 221. Total expenditures, 132 million 876, 549. Uses of fund balances brings us, brings us down to a shortfall, a little over $2 million. Total tax increase proposed for final budget is 2.59%. That brings the average tax bill of an assessment of $180,000. That is a $170 increase for the year or $14 per month.
Jim?
Yes?
And that is less than of a number than it was 30 days ago, correct?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Because 30 days ago was 2.75, if I am-
That is correct. Yep.
What if I give you another 30 days?
Too late. Yeah, we, we can't play like the state does. We have, we have to submit. Okay, and here is a big historical budget spreadsheet from Mrs. Hurd that we've kept over the years. There's a lot of numbers on here. If you'd like it cut up or sliced up in any other way, just let us know and we can, we can provide that to you. We do track our tax increases and all of those figures going back to 2004, 2005 on a really big spreadsheet, so. Any questions on that from the school board for final budget approval?
I just personally want to thank you, Mr. Weaver and you, Mrs. Hurd. Honestly, the work that you put in to actually accomplish this from where we were even 90 days ago is really, really remarkable and I, especially taking a look at the other districts around us and what they're faced with with regards to their budget, it's commendable. So we really appreciate having you here in Perkium and Valley. Sincerely, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hurd?
We know, I mean, listen, we know that really behind the scenes.
All right, good. Any questions from the community on that? Okay. Okay, and so with that approval, we'll set up the Homestead Farmstead tax relief. I'd like to note that it's about $51 more than last year. There's nothing that we did. The state simply funded more for that taxpayer relief. Remember, it's revenue neutral to the district. It comes in, every penny that comes in goes back out to our taxpayers. And there is a resolution associated with that. Any questions on that? Standard operating procedure. Okay, food service prices. We have not increased our food service prices since 2020, 2021. And the recommendation in working with Kelsey Gartner, our new food, new food service director, is to increase prices by 10 cents at each building. It's an unfortunate fact that we need to do this. We do run it through a paid lunch equity from the National School Lunch Program. That is telling us that we should probably go up 25 cents. We don't feel that's appropriate. We do have a fund balance in our food service, which we do know. However, we are running about a $75,000 shortfall this year. That's our projection. This 10 cents in the building will help offset that and that's our recommendation. Any questions? Any questions from the community on that? And, oh, one, breakfast is still free next year as well.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes?
I'd just like to commend you on holding the line on that too, so to stay at 10 cents as opposed to 25. That's, that's yeoman's work that you and your staff are doing, so thank you, especially for the students in our district.
You're welcome, and I would also like to say you're welcome from Kelsey Gartner, who is new to our district and is doing a really good job. Sat down with Amy and I when we looked at the numbers and cost per meals and all kinds of good stuff for us. So the school district's set up for success in food service. That was a, that was a really good hire. This is just kind of the summary of the DCED grant that I talked about a little bit earlier. There is a resolution associated with that. We did confirm with DCED that we could get this resolution ratified tonight and then we could submit it and it would still meet the criteria of the grant. They were okay with that and I've got it in writing, so there we go. All the resolution really does, there's the application that we sent in, just one page of the 30 some odd pages that we sent in. All this app, all the resolution really does is it allows and notifies everybody, the board and the, and the public, that we are on the hook for 600 and, just a little less than 602,000 dollars. That's the 25% match for that. Any questions from the school board? Any questions from the community on that one? Okay, parent square, Mr. Ganesh.
This will be quick. So our communication needs have, have increased over the last several years. We currently use a lot of tools like Blackboard, Smore, Talking Points, Remind, et cetera. So what we're proposing is to be more effective and also to build stronger connection with our families. We are proposing to upgrade to parent square, which will kind of serve the district needs under one unified platform. This against, this again provides the same communication, one unified messaging across various platforms like text messaging, website, email, social media, et cetera. So it's a, it's a very seamless, I mean, this is a very seamless application and we expect it to be a very seamless transition moving into this application from, from Blackboard. We are hoping to have this implemented this summer with the August Go Live date. And since this is going to be replacing variety of tools that we have, this is not going to be any add to the budget. So this is on the, this is an action item for 5.07. Any questions?
Will the bus company also, all of it, everything will go through this?
So if you, if you recall, Ms. Widener, we recently implemented a bus app. So if everything goes well, the plan is the bus company would use the bus app, which would, which would then have notification for the parents rather than relying on a communication tool. That's how we plan to handle that. But until, until that's, that's, that's seamless, they will continue to use a messaging app, yes?
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay. One other point?
This is a point of pride. We had another bond rating phone call a couple of weeks ago in anticipation of our new money bond issue and we were reaffirmed again at double A rating. So again, that's the good work that you mentioned. That's the whole team effort, financing team, Jamie Doyle. So we're very proud about that.
You're, I was thinking that this was just an intermission, I didn't know. You actually done it. That worked out really well, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna do these since there's a boatload of them down there, I wanna do them in little blocks, so 5.02, 03, 04, and 05. Are there any questions about any in that block? If not, we'll move those all to consent. Number 506, it is, they are requesting action, motion to ratify the DCED Public School Facility Improvement Grant, just as Mr. Weaver was just talking about. So is any question or comment about that?
We need action on that tonight, so I will move that.
Well, I was actually just gonna see if there was any questions about it before we did the move. Okay, all right. Then do I have a motion?
It is moved.
Okay. A second? All right.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Okay. 5.07 through 5.10, I'm gonna take those as a clump. Any questions on any of those four? If not, we will move those to consent as well. 511 to 516, are there questions on any of those? I will then move those to consent as well. 5.17 and 5.18 are both placeholders. 5.19 to 5.23, any questions in any of those areas? If not, I will move those to consent. 5.24 and 5.25, questions on either of those two? Move those to consent. 526 is already on consent, 527 is a placeholder, and 5.28, there is no report for June, and that completes my section.
Mr. Fountain, excellent job, thank you so much.
That was smooth, Mr. Fountain.
Efficient, it was. I mean, top-notch, and you grouped them.
Dr. Dietrich, you can learn a lesson from that finance.
Oh, now, now. Mr. Keenan, payment of bills.
Hi, we have 6.01, and I'm just not clear, I guess we could take motion, take action on it tonight or take action on it next week, but what do you want to do? It doesn't say action tonight.
Move it to consent?
Move to consent, all right, it wasn't on the consent list, so that's fine. Any questions? And 6.02 and 6.03 are placeholders for next week. That ends my section.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Professional personnel, Mr. McKinney, section 7. Now you have something to live up to since you've given Dr. Dietrich a...
My apologies, Dr. Dietrich.
Approval to authorize personnel employment contracts, any questions? Having heard none, move to consent. 702, 703, 704, 705, oh, 702, 703, 704 are all on consent. 705 is a placeholder. 706, 707, 708, 709 are all on consent. 71, 7.10 on consent, and 7.11, approval to, approval of staff services agreement with the MCIU. Are there any questions? Having heard none, please move to consent. And that is my section.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney. Section 8, support personnel, Dr. Weston.
Items 8.01 through 8.06 are all on consent. Item 8.07 is a placeholder, and that concludes section 8.
Very good. Section 9, governance, Mr. Liggett.
Thank you. 9.01, there are seven policies up for, presented for first reading. 902, there's an approval to hold second reading on the attached policies. If there are no questions on these policies, I'd like to move those to consent. Thank you. And then, item 9.3, there's a motion to approve an expulsion resolution as, as attached. According to this, it is for action tonight, so I so move.
There's a motion and a second, are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? And that motion passes.
That's it for my section, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Liggett, and that brings us to section 10, closing items at 10:21. 10.01 is comments from the audience, does anyone in the audience that is still here with us have a comment? Okay, seeing none, 10.02, comments from board members? Dr. Russell?
Just have a brief one. I'm sorry, Mr. Liggett, did you have a comment? Oh, okay. I just, I'm not certain if Mr., if Dr. Dietrich will be here next week, but I just want to publicly thank, thank you for your service to our district in this capacity. It's been a tremendous help and great assistance to our administrative team and to our staff. Fits like a glove, so really appreciate all that you've done for us and your support of, of me in this role, so thank you, and we look forward to more work together in the fall. So I'm not sure if you're gonna be here next week, so I wanted to get that on the record. Well, thanks.
And then, we moved all these items to consent, you know, after this meeting being so long, you know, maybe I will be back next week. Just, all kidding aside, though, thank you, Dr. Russell, for those kind words, and thank you to the school board, this community, for all the support that's been shown to me. Really appreciate the experience of being here, and I look forward to continuing, you know, in the role that we moved to consent this evening for providing executive coaching, so thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Dietrich, so much.
And that was in spite of what Mr. McKinney was saying a while ago.
It's, it's like retirement is like overrated for you, apparently, it's like you're gonna... That's the coaching lesson, is that no one should ever retire, they should stay, you know, in that capacity forever.
Dr. Dietrich, your sandwich of choice is on me.
Oh, there you go. Does anyone have anything else to say? All right, so with that, notice of video disclaimer, 10.03, 10.04 is adjournment. I will say that we had executive session for personnel and safety prior to the meeting, and with that, we will see you next week. Thank you, everyone.